Okay, it is one o'clock. We will go ahead and resume our retreat. And first, we have public safety update with Chief Vargas and Chief Hale. Chief Vargas, floor to yours, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. That was a great lunch. Williamson Gabe Vargas, Fire Chief. As you know, most of our kids back at school. Right here is firefighter Card and Harris, teaching about apparatus to the kids. With that, I have a building question within the presentation that I will ask the group, several questions to help me interpret our data. But first, let's meet our fire protection staff. Right here is lead by, that is led by our Fire Marshal Tim DeDeere. He and his staff created the fire inspection program back in 2018 where the council approved. The first year, we grossed $95,000. That's 10 months worth of data. We started late in December. The following year, we grossed 79, and we didn't hit our benchmark because one person retired, Don Ross, took a while to replace him. Also, we're starting the pandemic, so that's a little bit down too as well. This fiscal year, we're projected to hit $52,000. But again, we're missing our mark. And the big reason why we didn't fulfill, as we mentioned earlier, two part-time fire inspectors. So moving forward, we are recommending to city management that with our current staff, we can able to check out businesses and gross $68,000. That's one scenario. This next scenario is with Ben's help, a partnership with code enforcement. Leo, Leo's taking fire courses, Fire Inspector One and Fire Inspector Two. So that way, he's in the building anyway, so he puts his code enforcement hat, after he's completed, takes the hat and put the fire inspector hat, and he can check out that building, that building too as well. And we're projecting, projecting $76,000 that he can bring, that all of us can bring in. But the big one is with your approval, the additional of a full-time inspector. And that's what he or she would, or he would do, as a full-time inspect the buildings. And the best part is, besides the $120,000, we'll be able, you can't see that right, that's in a way, we'll be able to check all the business, fire protection system, within 12 months. Currently, currently, right now, it's going to take us 21 months in order to hit all the CFR branch. Our goal is always to do 12 months. So with the third option, we were able to hit that. And that's just a snapshot, what we could do now. But what about the future? Here's at least 30 businesses that we will, they're in the process to come online. And we were able to absorb that business coming in. So we still, so we'll be over $120,000, we can project to gross, to gross. And we should be able to hit all these additional ones within one year or two as well. Let's talk about EMS. EMS, Texas Ambulance Supplemental Payment Program. We've been involved with them since 2014. It's something that we, the city, we apply, and we work with finance to get this completed. So the first year, you see, we grossed $104,000. And that, again, only worth 10 months worth of data. And every year, we continue on that process. We have hired a third consultant to help us generate the information. And lastly, it takes Sherrill's signature in order to get that money. This fiscal year, we applied, and we're projected in next month that to bring in roughly $350,000. The biggest change, the biggest change is the way how we calculate the uninsured patients. So Texas was the first state to adopt, to adopt the charity care patient method. And with that, we're projecting about, as I said earlier, about 350. And the check should be here next month.
Wonderful. Thank you for that information. Wonderful.
This is year three.
I'm sorry, is that like a grant funding amount that pays for, that helps?
My fault, yes, sir, you're right. Let me explain the program, you're right. So it's a special program through FEMA, and the state will distribute the money. We have to apply each, every year. And for this, for charity care, we have to define that. What does that mean as far as a patient? The city council adopted back in 2019, Resolution 2019-127. How do we define a charity care patient? There's three different ways. The first way is when someone does not pay their bill, our merchant con, our billing agency, will contact Terrell and we'll ask her several questions. After those questions completed, they, let's see if you fit within the federal poverty level. If you do, you qualify for that. Next one, just say you don't answer the phone. And then we'll, we'll look at your credit history. Soft pull, your credit score is below 550, you consider a patient a charity credit patient. Lastly, for some reason, we can't get a hold of your credit score, we will look at the IRS zip code, low income area. If you fall within that, that zip code, and you qualify. So at fiscal year 2020, we had a little over $900,000 unpaid EMS bill. So out of $900,000, we went through this program, one-third that the federal government, we were able to, to tap in. Usually, every year, the government will give the states $3.1 billion for us to tap in there. So we started back in 2014.
Okay, so the rest of that, the balance, is just what we eat?
Yes, sir.
Based on our cost?
Is that it's all funded by FEMA?
Yes, yes.
Is that a grant we can apply for every single year?
It's not grants, it's a program. Most of the state and federal have to, I think every three to four years, they have to renew. And I think three years ago, we were afraid they will shut that funding, but they renewed that funding for us. I don't know when it expires.
Okay, but it has to be used within that fiscal year?
No, 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 when the check comes in.
Yeah, this is, it's just reimbursing us for amounts we don't receive for our transport through Medicaid. And so it just goes into the ambulance revenue fund, the general fund.
Right, so to connect the dots, how we're showing like $407,000 coming for this year, and you see that number declining. If you were to take a look at your general fund revenue summary, there's a line item there for emergency services, and you'll see a decline in that number. And this is one of the drivers of that, the reason for that.
So that absorption, that roughly $600,000 loss, that is based on our costs, not our, not our billable fee?
Overall costs. Yes, that one, I think it's our billable.
Our billable fee, okay. So if we, if we looked at what our actual net loss on that would be, it'd be, it'd be less?
Well, if you like blended and think about like general fund altogether, because additionally, you know, some portion of property tax revenue was taking care of emergency services overall. So that's where some sort of absorption with that comes in. And you can kind of just take a look at the plus, minus, and the net impact on general fund. There's a ton of other, you know, items that are also associated with delivering that service.
You know, like on, well, like for the private, for private care, you've heard ordinary reasonable, right?
Yes. RUCR, RUC. Yeah. And so that number is a much more inflated number when I'm looking at, at loss. That number is much more inflated than if I was looking at our cost of service.
Yeah, well, the US government has essentially decided what the ordinary reasonable is for, for transport. It's a lot less than what it actually cost us to transport. So we get, we get what they, what they think we should have, we get back.
We're going to take care of the delta?
Yeah, that's a chunk of change. And we just write off the delta, because that's part of doing Medicare and Medicaid. As you, you just say, you know, we, we will, we'll accept the ordinary reasonable right off the rest. We're not going to collect on it.
Right.
So to follow up on this, $900,000 that was spent in charitable care last operating season, are we putting the $600,000, or in last, I'm looking at last year, $407,000, is the remaining followed up in general fund under fire operations? Is that where that is coming from?
No, no, it's, we're talking about just the revenue. It's emergency, what's it called, Sherrill?
It's listed as emergency services.
Yeah, in the general fund revenue, it just comes in as emergency services. So the revenues, revenues come in the general fund, and then the expenditures would be out of the, is it operations in the fire, fire operations? That's where the expenditure comes out of.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Where's the expenditure coming from? Fire operations, is that correct?
Yeah, it's just the cost of, you know, the vehicle and the personnel, that's, that's the call.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just looking for the number. Okay, that's great, thank you.
Firefighter gear, we, we are geared number three to purchase 25 sets of firefighter gear. So that way, the intent is that every firefighter, we got a total of 78 firefighters in operations, to have two sets of gear. And the reason behind it is, is part of our council reduction policy. And the old days, when we used to fight fire, we'd go to your house, light the fire, and we're all dirty, take off our gear, and just put it next to the firing engine. And sometimes we have another fire or automatic fire alarm, we can put that back on. It's dirty and nasty and sweaty, and we respond. By doing that, we found out that we are exposing ourselves to cancer causing agents. So best practice, we start four years ago, and start, start to get the second gear. So the practice is, after a firefight, gross decon, and then go to the station, put it in the washer and dryer, do it, take between four or six hours, but have a second pair already lined up, already there. So that way, here she is clean, and they're in a clean gear, and reduce the chances for that person to have cancer. Because we're twice as likely to develop cancer in our profession. Operation, we'll talk about three main topics, call volume responses and tops of calls. With the big jump this fiscal year, we're projecting to hit over 5,800 calls. Here's question number one, why do you think it's a big jump? 800 more calls.
More people.
There you go. We already talked about it earlier, people are moving in. Chief Hale is seeing it, I'm seeing it, and so there's a big jump, which is good. We saw, we saw on the fireside that we are approving plans, that people are moving in. Great, but there it is, there is an impact for us. And see how, how high we get and how we level off. But now, where's the concentration of the 911 calls? And I chose 2018 because it's pre-COVID. I don't want COVID to taint our data, so it's the first nine months. And I'll explain why the first nine months of 2018. So you can look at our, look at our hotspots, where we at. There's four hotspots, and this is where the old Station Two was placed right there. The goal is always to have a fire station around the hotspot, so that we can respond quickly. So this is our current fiscal year right now, the first nine months. So I want to compare apples to apples. So there it is. So now, with the new Station Two moved, we're right here. And so we're surrounded by the, by the red spots. And that's, that is the goal. But next one is, how, how are we performing? So anything green, we met the benchmarks. The benchmarks are two types. One is fire, six minutes and 24 seconds. EMS, six minutes and 30 seconds, meaning the time that you pick up the phone and we arrive, six minutes and 30 seconds. So you can see, back in 2018, we hit the mark a lot of times throughout the city. Again, Station Two is right here, the old one, old site. And, but we have a lot of residential staff. We've already hit that benchmark right here. Here, so here is Station Two moved at the new site. We're hitting that benchmark, so it's less yellow here. But there are some yellows up here. And I'll explain what that is in a couple more slides, and tell you what, what the differences are. Ah, you already beat me already. I'm visually show you, show you that. So right now, a snapshot for 25 hours, I took this last week. So we averaged about 14 to 15 calls per day. So this particular day, we are slow. One week later, look at what, what happened. So that's a lot of calls right there. Two weeks, one month, two months. So what is, okay, now question number two. What is the most common calls that, calls that we get in city fire branches by looking at the icons?
Funny call.
There you go, yes, yeah. We respond a lot of number calls throughout the, out the city. So yes, Sir, Congressman Lynn, you're completely right. If I had to choose as a fire chief, were to place a, a fire, a fire station in this area or this area right here, because we respond to the citizens quicker. Usually, literally, 99% of the time, this is false alarms. So there's no emergency there. Whereas right here, usually it is. So that's why it's a good decision to move it down south where we at. Great picture of Captain Bothman and his crew. Two weeks ago, or excuse me, last month, they taught a CPR class to this group of people here. But the question that I have is that who, who are helping us? So next fiscal year, we want to wrap up a program called the Peer Support Program that was initiated by the International Association of Firefighters to make sure mentally, we are, we are here, stable. Because the past 18 months has been different, and there is a stress on public safety. So I've asked several firefighters at different stations about this program. Everyone said that's a good, a good program for, to initiate. We'll send nine firefighters, in fact, we'll host it here for our branch, bring other fire departments to our, our city, and we'll send our nine firefighters to get certified through this peer program. So that, just in case, just in case, we experience a traumatic event after station, or it's a personal divorce, we have someone that that person can talk to. And we, if we think that this person went, went to a dark area, we definitely reach out to HR, make sure that, to bring them back. So that's a big deal for us, the first time we will initiate that. With that, thank you for your support and your leadership, Charles. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Derek.
So from an equipment standpoint, are you where you need to be?
Yes, sir. Based on, right here, we're, we're day driven, we love data right there. So yes, sir.
Okay. And from a personnel standpoint, you know, you're sort of fixed. A fire truck only holds so many people.
Yes, sir.
So are you where you feel like you need to be from the staff?
Yes, sir.
Perspective?
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions?
I just want to say, y'all make it out to my building to inspect every single year. And so y'all have not slacked on my business at all. So, but no, I appreciate you guys coming in and all barring my actions with, with, you know, with, y'all are right down the street from us, so y'all are always quick to respond to us, and y'all taking really good care of us, and everyone who's out.
What kind of industry y'all practicing where fire departments come?
Well, they come for our fire inspection. They come for our fire inspection, so, well, and they have had to respond to a couple of patients who aren't feeling well, so. But other than that, it's been, it's been good. So appreciate all of y'all's hard work and continued dedication to our city, so. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you how much we appreciate you sending the trucks out. The, this past summer, for a couple of events that we've had you guys. It made, it was a huge impactful thing for us, so we appreciate y'all.
I would give a shout out to Chief DeDeere, too. One of the things the fire department does for economic development is when they go and they do all these building inspections, they share the information. And it has been so valuable. We'll get a call from Tim, and he'll say, hey, this guy, this business is busting at the seams right now, y'all need to be talking to him, because they're going to need more space and it's not here. We have gotten great, great information. Or it's a ghost down in here, you know, they only have a few more people. I don't know when their lease is up, but y'all need to be thinking that, you know, they may be closing or whatever. It's been fantastic, and it has been such a great tool. You know, we have code enforcement, that's, that's now happening, happening with combined inspection. So the way these departments work in the city is fantastic, and you do not find this in other communities. When you go and talk to other cities about economic development and retention, and we talk about what a great resource, no, not one of them has used their fire department. Not one of them.
That's odd.
Yeah. But it's just their, most economic development efforts are a corporation that are separate from City Hall, and they don't even think about it. And it's like, it's phenomenal, because, oh, they'll, they'll share it with you? Yeah, we're all on the same team.
Same team. So, John, you reminded me of something. Crystal, if you don't mind, I'm concerned, and I'd like to know a little bit more. You know, we have Leo, who's supposed to be doing code enforcement, okay? And Charles, you told me that we're writing bukus of violations or warning citations every month. How is he going to have time to do anything for you when he really needs to be focusing on code enforcement?
Good question. Starting October, we're sitting down with Chief DeDeere, Scott, and Leo to address the plan, because our, his number concerns code enforcement. Sometimes, as you, as he stated before in the past, there are some times that are just slower in the seasons, that's where we ramp up the fire inspections.
Chief? Talking to Leo, you know, they go out and do the inspections at the apartment complexes, do the random, and we do the apartments as well, not inside the apartments, but the common areas, and the chemical rooms and stuff like that, social pools. It would be nice to utilize him. He's already out there at these apartment complexes on an annual basis anyway. Do his thing, and then, while he's there, look at the stuff for us. And he's certified, if he finds any fire violations, he can do it. So basically, instead of sending two individuals out to the same property and paying for that, we can be on another property and, and go from that 21-month down to a 17-month, and then put the full time down to the 12 months, so.
And when he's out doing inspection, are we getting a fire inspection fee?
Yes.
For his work as fire, not as code?
That's correct. He just turns the hat, he does an inspection form on our tablet, and a apartment complex generally brings in about $150.
So with his help?
That revenue still will be billed by our third-party vendor, Fire Recovery USA, and they will pay, and that money goes to the general fund.
Roughly $10,000 was his help that he could generate.
10?
Yes, yes, sir. $76,000.
And basically, also, there's times where if someone does get sick, or LA, or we have some vacation time being used, and our numbers are dropping a little bit because of something happening, they can come back on the back end, help fill that and keep us well.
Okay. I think that's a great use of staff. That makes, that makes perfect sense. And if you, if you've got to have fire out, I mean, if you've got to have code out anyway, not to mention that that also puts him as a fire inspector, inspector, puts him into a, you know, into those buildings that maybe he wouldn't have been probably to from a code enforcement standpoint as well. So, I mean, covering both of those sets of eyes in one person, that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
We want to utilize him, sorry, Chief. But I just want to utilize him for some of the mall hall shots. The COs that come through, that we get hammered with every day. And so we look at them, go, this is a slam dunk inspection. Leo, why don't you go do this at your convenience, if you can? Not, we'll take care of it. But allows us to work in the warehousing, and the high rises, and the factories, and things like that. They're a little bit more, better for us to look at from our educational standpoint. We have a little bit more knowledge when it comes to those high opportunities.
This program would have not started with the help of Ben, to open that door, to have that conversation. So that was successful, that all of you can sit down at table and just brainstorm. So we're excited to move forward next fiscal year. How successful could it be?
Sorry, a question related to the mental health program. You know, it's a big, it's a big priority for me, working, coming from the healthcare field. One of the things that I was going to wait to talk about tomorrow, but, but you kind of, kind of started the conversation with that is, you know, there has been a big push to ensure that CPR training is, mental health first aid training is as big as CPR training. So just like you take CPR training, having availability to take mental health first aid training. There are programs nationally that are offering courses for, to be trainers for mental health first aid. And I think that's something that I would love for us to explore, where it wouldn't be a budgetary item, but it would be an opportunity for our citizens, individuals that work with, a lot of our work in areas of service, to our citizens are able to get trained on looking at signs of, of mental health, making sure that everybody is aware, especially now that that is something that more folks are able to talk about. I think the mental health of all of our, our, especially our first responders, is of utmost importance. And this is also a way for, for our citizens to also be trained. I think the program is great, I am so excited that we have it. One thing that I would like to explore is, you know, how can we offer those things? And I, I think our fire department would probably be the best, the best equipped, because you already do a lot of that CPR training, and it's usually a partnership that you have, CPR and mental health first aid. And we can talk more about this online, but I wanted to go ahead and start planting the seed, because I wanted to make sure that folks know that there are opportunities for us to get the training to our, our staff for free, that they become trainers, that they can train other citizens that would like to take, take that training as well. So, and I'm not sure, Chief, I wanted to bring it up, I'm not sure if that's something that you all have done in the past, if you all know about the program. Just wanted to ask that question in case, just get your thoughts in general, if it's something that you think would be beneficial and that we could do.
We can explore it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Are you familiar with the mental health first aid program? Okay, okay, perfect, sounds good. We can, I'd love to talk to you about it offline, but, but I wanted to bring it up here, because I know it's, you know, sometimes it's perceived as a budgetary item based on training, but because of everything going on nationally around mental health, there are national organizations, even local organizations like United Way, that are offering it for free. And so we can train trainers, and then they can train our citizens. Which I think it'd be a great opportunity to add to our academies potentially, our fire academy, our police academy as part of like the curriculum. So anyways, love to explore that with, with the both of you at some point as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Merritt, any questions? Mayor Dye?
I'll just echo the code enforcement concern, making sure that we monitor that. I was appreciative of the explanation that the chief and Lieutenant DeDeere spoke of, how that was going to operate. I think that is something we need to manage the message very effectively, how that is working. If Leo is responsible for those department code enforcement elements, it does make perfect sense. I'm on board for the utilization of, the effective utilization of that resource. But I think we need to manage that message as we look at code enforcement over the next six months, and see how that plays out beneficially to both code enforcement and the fire department. But again, thank you, Chief, and your staff for all you're doing, and look forward to a very good year. And hopefully, the numbers are lower than the 5,800 projected, but we'll see.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions, Chief.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Did you?
No, no, go ahead, sorry, Michael.
What is the lead time for training of, you know, a new, a new firefighter? We're talking about the over hire in police and?
We have plenty of options. The quickest way is go to a fire academy, it's about three to four months. Depends which, which academy you want to go to. Or you can do the weekend, or you can do night classes. So it ranges from the earliest is three months, or up to a year to graduate, to get your, get certified as a firefighter state of Texas. And same thing with being a paramedic. The earliest we can get done, depending what class they take, what academy, three months and up to nine months. So it depends where that person enrolls.
And three months for people coming out of the fire academies?
Yes, it could be, yes. But for us, it is required that you already be certified. And so far, we're having some trouble, but not a lot. So far, the past three years, been successful to get a firefighter paramedic certified.
And for the paramedic, is that still being done down at Parkland?
Various places, UT South Western or Dallas College.
And how long is that part of the training?
It can range from three months up to nine months, depending what class that they, they would enroll in. Night class, weekends only, because some people, some people do work, or just by the bullet and go through the whole thing, the whole semester within three months.
And I think you made a very good case for, you know, needing one more head count in your department. I'm just curious, as our population has basically doubled in the last 15, 18 years, what has been the head count in the fire department over, say, these, these last 10 years? I think you said we've got 78 employees right now?
So currently, we have 78 in, in operations, firefighter paramedics, and 10 overall in, in admin and prevention. So with this additional person, will be a total of 89 personnel in the whole, entire fire department.
And what would have been the head count, say, 10 years ago and five years ago?
Ooh, good question. I'm curious.
Well, one area that we normally keep this information is toward the back of, like, a published budget book. It'll give you the past five years. I would need to go back to an older budget book to tell you, like, a 10-year thing, but you can see trends for each department over a number of years that way.
I was just trying to get a sense for, you know, every 5,000 or 10,000 in population we gain, how that likely would impact your department?
So it looks like in 2016, 17, there was a total of 79 full-time in fire. And in this budget year that we're living in, yeah, I was, yeah.
It's the full 10.
Oh, okay. Well, keep your book, I got my book, too. So we do have full 10, I'm thinking budget. I'm thinking budget numbers. But, yeah, we do have a full 10 that's disclosed within our pack.
Chief, how long ago was that safer grant added to battalion, I guess on the west side? Wasn't that six?
Six news.
Yes, last year. So, last March. So, we get, we had it two more years after then.
Then we had...
Last March, six. Okay. Because I was just saying, it couldn't have, the number couldn't have been stagnant with this phenomenal growth we've had. And it's been more concentrated on the west side.
Yes. That's the foreman crew we went to on the west side.
Right, right. Yeah, I was just trying to find it. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Chief. All right. Chief Hail?
Good afternoon.
Hello?
Good afternoon. I'm glad you're doing that. Which one are you? There you go. Just not have to leave them around. Okay. There is better for the microphone. Okay. Very good. Thank you. So, David Hale, police chief, not in uniform today, so that's for everybody else watching that doesn't know me. I'm going to back into my presentation. I'm going to show you what our high level, what our budget is for this year, or the proposed budget, and then go to the why in the following slides in regards to that. But before I get started on that, I wanted to pick up on something that Chief Vargas was talking about. They're doing six in peer support in the upcoming budget, all things working out. Well, we're doing three right now. And so, hopefully, we can combine those resources at some point to be able to maybe work together. Because one of the things that we've run across is, is that sometimes in the size of organizations that we're in, everybody knows everybody. And there's some reluctance for people to go and talk to folks. But if you're maybe out of the organization, or a step out, you might be more willing to go to talk to somebody. And public safety, even though our businesses are pretty different, we still know what we're up against out there. So, just to throw that out there in response to some of the questions that have already been asked. So, our proposed budget for this year is 16 million, 61,000. Our adopted budget for last year was 15,158 million. So, this year's, the proposed increase is 902,200. So, where is that increase coming from? So, the first factor is going to be INTEC cost increases. So, why does the police department house INTEC? We had dispatched before the consolidation took place to keep the numbers in public safety, so we'd have to know how much we're spending on public safety. We continue to house that in the police department budget. And part of that increase is a new CAD system for INTEC to take in calls, and that's computer aided dispatch. That also benefits us on our end because our mobile system, how we actually receive our calls in the squad cars, comes through a mobile system that is connected to CAD. And the usability of that system is very important to the officers because that's how they run people. That's how they message back and forth. That's how they look for locations, they get their mapping information. And most importantly, they get the call detail as it gets updated. So, they know as the call taker is talking to whoever the person needing help is, what is going on on the ground. And so, that's how they get their updated information. So, the next is obviously the two full-time positions. So, it's 101,000 per officer. So, you take the two FTE asks for two new police officers, and then the funding to fund two over hires to deal with attrition, and that gives you another pretty good chunk of the puzzle at 404,000. Oil and gas vehicle maintenance increases, I get that number from fleet. I'm not sure what's driving that number specifically, but it did make our, it is housed back in our budget. And so, that was something that kind of popped up on the radar. Vehicle replacement costs increased. This is variable because they, the fleet does a really good job of managing costs associated with maintenance of vehicles. It's not necessarily how old it is, but it's how much is it costing the city to operate that vehicle. And so, you might have a vehicle that's two years newer, that's on a replacement list just because of maybe some mechanical issues that they just can't get resolved. So, it's not always about how old it is, it's about how much is it costing the city to operate. And so, that's how our vehicles get replaced, and they do a very good job of doing that. So, the next, the next one, and again, these aren't large numbers, but we're looking at our, at doing additional training this year. COVID was rough on us for training, so we're trying to get back to some of our training regiments. Our recruiting video was done in 2016, 2015. So, we've updated it a little bit a couple of times, but it's really, especially in today's market, it is really in need of refreshing. And so, we're going to redo our recruiting video in the upcoming budget. And then, looking at technology and ways to go about increasing our effectiveness without having to always add personnel, flock cameras. This is a great company, Carrollton. Multiple police organizations are using these. They're cameras that we can put where we need to put them. And they're run by a cellular card. And so, if we have a hotspot, be it an apartment complex that has an issue with BMV's catalytic converter thefts, we can put these cameras out. They're very unobtrusive, they're very small, but they take pictures, but they also read license plates. And so, we're either gather this data and hopefully catch whoever's causing the issue in that particular place. So, that's a good way that we can have force multipliers without having to add personnel. Additionally, that are non-general fund initiatives, we're fortunate that we have some, we have some streams of revenue that fire doesn't have through seizures of bad people's money, mainly drug money. Two additional fixed license plate readers, and that actually came from our former red light camera program, which for those of you who are new and may not know, our state government, which has done a lot of interesting things over the past several years, they made those illegal for us, and so, we had to pull them all out. But we still have some funds left. We were able to use it for specific things, and this is one of the things that we're able to use it for. We're going to do two additional intersections. Currently, we have Marsh at Ridge Oak, covering Marsh Lane since it's a major thoroughfare. We have one on at Midway in McEwen, which is obviously a major thoroughfare. We have one at, because of all the new growth on the west end, we kind of jumped, we kind of got out of order because we had so many folks out on the west end. We put it Luna and Mercer, trying to catch, you know, a lot of that traffic coming back and forth there. We don't specifically have anything identified for these yet, but my guess is probably going to be either Josie, Valley View, or Val. But we're going to have to do some additional research before we decide where we're going to put them. But we continue that program with the hopes of ringing our entire city. So, if you're driving something stolen, or you're a wanted person coming into our city, it automatically tells us in our cars that you're coming into our city. If you've committed a crime, there's some back office software that we utilize, that we can actually look at timeframes in regards to when crimes were committed, go back to our camera systems, and see whence vehicles were moving in that area at that time. So, again, another force multiplier that we're trying to utilize instead of just always saying, hey, Charles, I need some more people.
Chief, sorry, before we move on, I have a question about, do we have one at 635 and Luna?
It's just north of that. The one we have in.
Because they're not our lights.
Because they're not our lights. And that stop won't let us put it on their lights.
The only reason I say that is because with all the racing that's going on, now we have some leverage with the new legislation around racing, which is great. But they all meet at the QuickTrip. And so, and I don't know, is the light just south of the one on the highway, one of our lights?
Yes.
Because that may be a good one, because a lot of them turn to go around to go into QuickTrip.
Right.
Just a suggestion, but it's just, the racing there, you can hear it.
That won't help you unless they've got a tag on their, a flag on their license plate.
No, I know.
Yeah, but we can capture, we can capture.
But we can capture it. And one of the things that if they now were able to do, to confiscate, or to issue a bigger citation, so if they've done it in other parts of the city, and they're doing it in our city, then we can catch them.
And that might be an opportunity for the flock camera too, QuickTrip, if that's such a hotspot.
Absolutely. And those are great.
There is that light right there at QuickTrip.
That's the one I'm talking about. The one right there in the, right where the hotel is.
That one is ours.
Yeah. But the ones that I wish we could put them on is the ones that are on the highway, which you can't do because of test stop. But anyways, I just wanted to note that because I know it's a huge concern in that area with the racing. But luckily, now we have a little more leverage, so.
Yes, we do. So, some good things happen too.
Yeah. The QuickTrip, the issue with QuickTrip is, QuickTrip makes money off those racers.
They do.
And so, when we tried to have them do an anti trespassing deal, they won't do it, right?
That is correct. It depends on who's, so if you talk to corporate, they're like, oh, we don't want to cause any problems in your city. But at the end of the day, you're just kind of getting a pat on the back from them. When you actually go talk to the managers who are working at that time, they're going, they're coming in here and buying all kinds of stuff. See, I'll go away.
Peter and I met with their real estate, end of real estate about that. It seemed to get better for a while, and it seems like it may be slipping in a direction. But we definitely sat down with a person who talked about this.
And they wouldn't be able to put a camera on there?
I believe the flock cameras, we could do. We'd have to...
We can do anything we want to in the right of way, which is, that's easy enough.
Yeah. Yeah, we had the same issue in Dallas with one of our QuickTrips. At the beginning, we talked to them, GR person, they were okay, but then once, yeah, they're just so unfortunate. But anyways...
They're in the business to make money.
Yeah, they are. It's understandable. Okay.
And so, we had, this is kind of a move forward, and these are seized funds, which again, these are seized drug funds for police canine and doing the training for that. That's about 30,000. The dog itself is roughly about 20,000. This was supposed to happen this year, but because we are so low, we've had to make some difficult decisions. And the canine is a specialized unit, it's very useful, and we're counting on our neighbors to help us out when we need one, which is great to build relationships. But we had to make a decision because of our staffing to not utilize, not go refill that spot again. The position's still there, it's just the dog and the handler have not been chosen yet. And it's just because of staffing, so we're open to get back to that in the upcoming budget year, and so, we can reinstate our police canine again.
The dog gets rehired. The dog gets hired.
That's right. Well, and the reason you kind of have to wait too, just for some educational purposes, is the dog is, is actually, the handler and the dog have to kind of hook up at the, whenever we send them away to buy the dog. There has to be a bond that occurs there, and you have to send the person who is going to handle the dog. And they have to kind of, it's kind of a strange process, but anybody that's a pet owner will understand it. And it's just like, there needs to be a type of bond there, and so, that's why we kind of have to have the person before we have the dog. Any questions so far on this slide? All right, so now, let's move to the why. So, our calls for service across, since 2018, you can obviously see the graph that we've increased our call load. We're not using, just like Gabe was talking about, 2020 was not a good comparative year for anything, because it really, our data was really off the charts in different areas and almost not existing in others. But what we can see is that in Q2 of '21, we're about 7% more calls for service than in Q2 of 2019. Our metric for response times is 240, so four minutes. So, we're not quite meeting that benchmark, but given our staffing levels right now and our increased call load, I'm very proud of my folks. They're doing a good job of still, you know, providing a good level of service. We want it to be better. And I think we can get back reasonably to that area, but it is still an awesome response time. But we're struggling a little bit with that metric right now, just because increased volume for calls. Any questions on this slide?
What's the law, what's the most, based on all the types of calls, what's the biggest chunk or percentage that is made up of all of your calls?
So, we're still a property crime city. And that's, it's not a good thing, but it's better than being a violent crime city.
That is true.
So, the majority of our calls for service are property crime. However, in the next upcoming slides, I'm going to show you some data on some increased call loads associated with personal crimes. And that's associated with growth.
Sure.
So, here's a little bit further breakdown on calls for service as it relates to growth. Something that we saw that was unique during Q2 of 2020 was that for our west end calls, we did not see the decrease in volume that we thought, that we saw throughout the rest of the city. And it was because we were continuing to grow even though the pandemic was going on, especially on the apartment. So, the calls for service on the west end, you could see a pretty significant curve going upward, especially over Q1 of '21. You know, 1,542 calls just for the west end. There's a little bit more, a little bit less of an increase on the east end because that is still kind of a burgeoning area. But we're seeing some of the other complexes with Jefferson, the east-west, and, you know, coming on. And so, we're starting to see some more increased call volume out there as well. And so, this is property, this is growth trends associated with calls for service, kind of with an additional breakdown associated with west end and east end. So, other current trends, and before I go into the data on this one, the types of calls for service make a difference for us. So, going and taking a, you know, somebody stole my bicycle off my front porch call is a lot different than doing a domestic violence where an assault, where an assault has occurred and by law, we are required to make an arrest. Or you're dealing with a homeless person where you're trying to gauge what the issue is. Are there services that we can provide? Who are we going to call? And is there anything we can do? So, the time consumption on the officer's time spent on calls goes up as the calls obviously become more complicated. And so, it's not just a number of, well, how many are you going on? How complicated are those calls for service? When you're dealing with people, they're uniquely more complicated. So, APALS, which is apprehension by a peace officer without a warrant, it is not an arrest. But it is an emergency detention. A person is placed in handcuffs, but they are not taken to jail. And by law, they have to be taken to the closest mental health facility. And, excuse me, and for us, that is Green Oaks. But we also use Parkland because currently, on any given day, we've got two notes written on our patrol board that says Parkland's on divert because they're full, and Green Oaks is on divert, and we may end up in Richards.
Chief Hail, do you mind moving David?
Sure. That work?
Yeah.
There you go. So, as you can see, our emergency mental health attentions have gone up significantly since 2018. You know, some of it's going to be a product of just growth, but a lot of it is the pandemic. And we're seeing this across the country. It is not an issue that is associated with just farmer's branch, but we're seeing this nationwide. Calls for involving the homeless, again, those have obviously increased. Again, the pandemic has exacerbated that problem, people losing their homes, people losing their jobs, and trying to figure out the best way to work with our homeless population. And there's always a nexus, or not always, but most of the time, there's a nexus between mental health, homelessness, or some type of addictive behavior. Those three things are generally a circle. You may not have one, but you're probably going to have the other whenever you're dealing with a homeless issue. Some of them are by choice, but a lot of them are not. There are other circumstances associated with their situation. These are time-consuming for us. So, we have to figure out, you know, one, are they a danger to themselves or others? Are there other service, other avenues at which we can give them help, or, you know, without having to do an emergency detention? And then, if we can't, then that officer is tied up, taking that person either to Green Oaks, or to Parkland, or even Richardson. And then, they have to, when they show up, they have to do an affidavit to show why that person is being brought to that facility. And then, there's a trip back to the city. So, these are time-consuming calls, and there's usually a lot of time spent talking before we actually take action, just to see if there's any way we can mitigate it before having to take charge of someone. Any questions on this one? Are there services that we can provide? Who are we going to call? And is there anything we can do? So the time consumption on the officer's time spent on calls goes up as the calls obviously become more complicated. And so it's not just a number of, well, how many are you going on? How complicated are those calls for service? When you're dealing with people, they're uniquely more complicated. So APOs, which is apprehension by a police officer without a warrant, it is not an arrest. But it is an emergency detention. A person is placed in handcuffs, but they are not taken to jail. And by law, they have to be taken to the closest mental health facility. And, excuse me, and for us, that is Green Oaks. But we also use Parkland because currently, on any given day, we've got two notes written on our patrol board that says Parkland's on divert because they're full, and Green Oaks is on divert, and we may end up in Richards.
Chief, I'll do my moving, moving David.
Sure.
That work?
Yeah.
There you go. So as you can see, our emergency mental health attentions have gone up significantly since 2018. You know, some of it's going to be a product of just growth, but a lot of it is the pandemic. And we're seeing this across the country. It is not an issue that is associated with just farmers' branch, but we're seeing this nationwide. Calls for involving the homeless, again, those have obviously increased. Again, the pandemic has exacerbated that problem. People losing their homes, people losing their jobs. And trying to figure out the best way to work with our homeless population. And there's always a nexus, or not always, but most of the time, there's a nexus between mental health, homelessness, or some type of addictive behavior. Those three things are generally a circle. You may not have one, but you're probably going to have the other whenever you're dealing with a homeless issue. Some of them are by choice, but a lot of them are not. Or there are other circumstances associated with their situation. These are time consuming for us. So we have to figure out, you know, one, are they a danger to themselves or others? Are there other service, other avenues at which we can give them help, or, you know, without having to do an emergency detention? And then if we can't, then that officer is tied up, taking that person either to Green Oaks or to Parkland or even Richardson. And then they have to, when they show up, they have to do an affidavit to show why that person is being brought to that facility. And then there's a trip back to the city. So these are time consuming calls. And there's usually a lot of time spent talking before we actually take action just to see if there's, if there's any way we can mitigate it before having to take charge of someone. Any questions on this?
Chief, before we go further, are there new, are there any programs regionally that are addressing some of this that we could participate in? I know there's a lot of different agencies and entities that are addressing this. So it's certainly not just a police department effort. But are we connecting with some of those other services that may help us in the long run? Not for an immediate solution, but for an overall addressment of this?
Yeah, that's.
I don't have a solution. I'm just asking a question because I know this is, as you wrote in your, in your slide here, it's not unique to us. But I know there are multiple layers of, you know, the federal government, the state, the county, et cetera, looking at dealing with homelessness. And so I'm just interested in how we're connecting with that. Chief, you want me to take that one since?
Let me, let me do two, and then I'll, then I know exactly what you're going, what you're headed into. So the answer is yes, and thank you for queuing that up for me. So currently, Intech, our dispatch center, they've contracted with Avail, which is a, it's a first level attempt to divert calls away from police and fire when it's not necessary. And so they have professionals, they've contracted with this company who are mental health professionals. And if they get on a call and they determine that their person is not a danger to themselves or others, they're not in any type of danger, you know, like say to themselves or someone else, or they're not violating any other type of law, but are just in a mental health crisis, those calls will be diverted to Avail solutions so that they can direct them to the folks that can help them best. Secondly, we just recently started using a group that is actually looking for some real estate that is called Our Calling. And they're trying to actually move some offices up into the Carrollton Farmers Branch area. And they will come out 24/7 and evaluate when we give them a call. We just utilized them for the first time last week. And I don't know what the outcome of that is yet, but it's promising. So there are things out there, but right now it is, there are so many people going in so many different directions because everybody wants to be helpful, trying to solve this issue because it is becoming so problematic. We're in the process of trying to get our hands and our heads around what is out there? How big is the problem? And then I'll kick it over to Charles Cox.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the county program?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, in the Council of Merit, it's taken, it's taken, quite frankly, we've talked about it for probably a year. But when you have a lot of different governments involved, sometimes it takes a while to get them all on the same, same path. But essentially, Capel, Farmers Branch, Carrollton, and Addison have in, have conceptually agreed to, and we still need to come back for formal approval with councils, but this is just, we just recently came into city management agreement that we would go in with Dallas County District Attorney's Office. And this is something that Judge Cruzo has offered because from the city's standpoint, yes, we have a growing issue with homelessness and how best to be able to serve folks that are having a mental health care crisis or homelessness, by choice or not. And so we're all wrestling with that. The last thing that you really want, especially during COVID, is to have homeless folks, people in mental distress in your jails, in the prison system, in the court system. It just, it gets to be a problem that compounds. And you're really, at the end of the day, not actually helping the individual if you're just getting them in the court system and putting them in behind bars. So it's a dilemma for all the cities. From the district court system, they really don't want to be in the prosecution business of prosecuting homeless individuals. And so that's where, why they come into play. And so Judge Cruzo and the cities, where the cities had been talking to a organization called the Meadows Foundation that has a kind of a mental health care homeless solutions consulting division. They've come up with a proposal to do a deep dive into the data behind the calls for service of both on police and fire. Because a lot of, you're just looking at police involvement in homelessness. Fire is involved with a lot of homelessness, too, except a lot of the calls when they come in, it's not like, oh, this is coded as a mental health care issue. It's coded as, it could be a disturbance. It could be, you know, just someone having a health issue. And so we need to find out what, you know, what is the problem, you know, delve in to find out exactly what calls for service we're having that are actually mental health care related. Come up with the quantity, come up with, or is there a nexus as to where they're happening? And so the Meadows Foundation has put together a proposal to do a deep dive into the data. Thankfully, we all use the same, Intech is the same dispatch organization, so that's, there's a consistency there. But look at the data, analyze the data, make recommendations for implementing some system where the cities can come up with a solution to help on a more coordinated basis, help these individuals. The issue has been that that consulting proposal was three hundred thousand dollars, which is a lot of money. And so enter the DA's office, they have seized, you heard the different pots of money that our chief is able to use. Same thing with Dallas County. They have some seizure money that can be only used for certain purposes. And so they have agreed to pay two hundred thousand dollars of that study with the cities paying an equal twenty-five thousand dollar share each for the remaining hundred thousand dollars. And so we're at the point of, I've offered to help put together and enter local agreement and the contracts associated with that and to divide it up, because no one wanted to be beholden to the county or have the county control the study. And so we, there's some mechanisms we can put in place to make sure that won't happen. But that's where we stand with that. We're now, now that we're all in agreement and understand the funding, and we have funding in this year's budget for the twenty-five thousand piece from our standpoint. And so we will move forward with that, but I think that's a big step in the right direction. One of the, one of the most expensive part is just determining what's the, what is the breadth of the problem that we actually have? And then go from there. So that's an update.
And I will add to that, Councilmember Merritt, one of the things that happened this last legislature session is that they allocated about forty-five million dollars for a North Texas psychiatric facility. One of the issues that we have in the healthcare field is the lack of beds, mental health beds in our facilities. But I think with that, we know that our homeless neighbors do suffer from a lot of trauma and a lot of those things. So I think this will enable us to be able to have a North Texas facility where we can divert a lot of those things specifically and have a much larger number of beds. And I know that's something that it's in partnership with UT Southwestern and a few other North Texas folks. So that's a plus. The problem is that we don't know where that's going to be. We, it's just, it was just allocated. But I think finally, folks are understanding the need for that and the need to be innovative, which is why I'm so excited that we're partnering in this county program with Judge Cruzo, so.
And one of the things that we're finding out is it's really, I mean, it's, you know, back when I was a little kid, I mean, there were institutions and people replaced institutions. That's not the way it is right now. People with mental, the vast majority of people under mental health care crisis, if they are, if they keep, there's medications that, and protocols that will enable them to be very responsible members of society and working members of society. It's just, they need case managers and people checking with them to make sure that they're on their meds, that they get their, that they stay with them. And so that's the part that is missing because there's not really an organization that is doing that. And it's, in the whole scheme of things, that's not that expensive. It's just there's no one there.
Yeah.
So that's, that's part of the equation.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why I think having the hospital as opposed to a facility is the best way to go to make sure that you have those healthcare experts that are able to diagnose and advise of what medications are appropriate.
Certainly a complicated problem. And hopefully, Chief, if the services that are being talked to, do you perceive or hope for a reduction in the time involved of your staff in these cases? Would there be a use case that would maybe require a police officer first on spot on the, on the site? And then handing that case off to someone else who picks it up at that particular spot? I'm just asking an open-ended question and would appreciate your perspective.
Sure, absolutely. Good question. And just to add to the previous conversation, I read earlier this week, the estimation was in Dallas County, we have about ten thousand homeless and we have two thousand beds. And so that, that's a big part of the where, where do we get folks their assistance? But to move on to your question is that, yes, that is the hope that we're able to, on certain calls for service, maybe even take the officer totally out of the loop. But what I caution folks about is, is that I know across the nation, there was a lot of, a lot of cries for defunding and giving the money to social services and to other groups. The only problem with that is I think sometimes it still is going to have to be a team effort because there's a difference between people being in a mental health crisis and somebody being psychotic. And we see both. And somebody that is psychotic is, has a huge propensity for violence because they are totally not within themselves. And so in those circumstances, I don't think we'll ever be able to take the police out of the scenario. But I think if we do a good deep dive and figure out to what percent of those calls are we doing that, having to do that? And what are some of these lower level situations where we may not have to involve an officer unless we're called upon for assistance? Then yes, that would be our hope.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
And thank you, Charles, for the information as well.
Sure. And Councilmember Merritt, one further thing I want to mention is that in talking to the Meadows Foundation and talking to our folks at Intech, right, in prior work, the Meadows Foundation has said that when, when they started to look into and do deep dives into the data, they say that a lot of the mental health care calls come in as they're coded as domestic disturbance. And if you talk to a police officer, that's one of, that, in terms of the potential danger to the police officer of being shot, that's one of the top ones. And so when people think, because I know, and you've heard throughout the past year that, hey, you know, are there certain services where we can just take the police out of the picture and just send a mental health care professional directly? I think that would be a horrid mistake to send some, you know, domestic disturbance call, send someone that is not armed, so.
Yeah, I want to, I want to be clear that I, my use case had the first responder.
Yeah, correct.
Going there. And that at some point, when it was deemed appropriate, that a handoff could occur. I want to make that clear that it was never a, eliminate the police officer out of that equation because there are too many factors, and the chief is well-versed and has first us well, and that there's too much to process. So thank you again.
Well. All right, anything else on this slide? I will move on to an additional current trend. And as I said earlier, you know, our city, the crime that we deal with, the majority of the time is property-related. And so we're seeing that as we have more folks moving into the community. They're bringing their vehicles with them, and so we're seeing an increase in motor vehicle theft. A lot of that does occur from the parking lots of our multifamily dwellings. And there's a reason behind that. It's, it's just like whenever you want to go to the mall and have a variety of things to shop for, you go to the mall because there's lots of things there. If you're a thief that wants to steal a car, you go to a parking lot that has a lot of cars in it. And so that kind of, that kind of drives that number. There's a lot more opportunity. There's a lot more folks who you don't know if they belong or don't because apartment communities, a lot of times, they're transient. Folks are not there for a super long time. And so the suspicious behavior does not get reported. Whereas if you're in a single-family neighborhood, most of the time, you at least have seen your neighbor. And so you know if somebody's crawling around under your, under their car, that it's not a neighbor. So that's something that property, that population growth has brought. The biggest one, and let me, I need to move you again, Councilman, on the screen. So theft of vehicle parts, and we've seen a significant increase since 2018. And this, this is mainly driven by the theft of catalytic converters. So why do people want catalytic converters? It's because they are full of precious metals, including titanium. And so that is why, that is why people want those. And it's not just because, you know, it's something neat to hang on the wall. It has precious metals inside of that. Titanium being the most precious of them. And so with a eighteen volt sawzall, you can slide under a car on a crawler very quickly. You know, the deal that you roll under to check the stuff on your, underneath your car very quickly and probably less than thirty seconds, if you have a good blade and a charged battery, it's gone. They cut it out. You come out, and the only way you know about it is you start it up, and you're like, wow, I didn't know my car was that loud. Because it's gone. And so, and the market for this, and so we've had some help. This is not a new phenomenon. This is not new. It's been happening for as long as emission controls have been in place. It has become a lot more popular, though, let me go back a little bit. The legislature has helped us on this. They've made it against the law for scrap dealers to actually buy these. So they've tried to help us in the past by saying, look, you better, somebody better be able to prove where these things are coming from before you ever purchase them. So we have had some help in the past. The problem that has come up now is that we have this great system of Letgo and all of these social, all of these sites that you can sell property on. There's not enough police officers in the world, or enough detectives, or enough feds to monitor all of these sites. So one of my sergeants pulled up on Tuesday the Letgo site. And there were probably no less than twenty different folks locally who are selling catalytic converters all the way from ones coming off of passenger vehicles to ones coming off the trucks that are parked in our business areas.
They gotta be real.
They're huge. They're about, they're about that long. The problem is, is that there's no markings on those that associate them back to the vehicle. And so that kind of, it makes it hard for us, even when we catch somebody, to prove where they came from and who they belong to. And so you can probably go back on one of these sites and buy the one that was cut out from under your vehicle and buy it back. They're about a grand apiece. When you get them through your insurance company and actually get, you know, an OEM part, it's about five grand. So that is the reason we're starting to see more and more of this. And again, flock cameras, hotspots, this is where this is going to be really helpful for, helpful to us to try to track down some of these folks that are doing this stuff.
I know that we talked about in, Allison talked about, and Tina talked about with some of our new development deals with our multifamilies, making that a requirement, that they include those cameras and those safety measures in the garages specifically to address really stuff like this.
Yep.
So I was thinking that maybe, because I know we have the neighborhood partnership with the police department, if they register their cameras.
Cameras, Mhm.
They have their own camera, the cell camera. And so, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see, because I haven't seen much of that on social media or, and it sounds like that could, that could be a bigger help. Because I know that a lot of our apartment dwellers are utilizing the, especially like in mine, in the Mustang Plaza, they have the door cams. And so, you know, I don't know if your crime, if that's happening in that particular complex just because, you know, there's more street parking versus in the.
Yeah, the deal with those is, is that, is that most of it's happening in the garages. Street parking, it's a lot harder because you're going to have to park in the street, roll under a car, roll back, and you're a lot more likely to be seen. It's once you enter into these parking garages where you can kind of park and just kind of.
Ease over.
Into the, into the, into the. Yeah, the dark spots in the, in there, and then go to town.
Yeah.
So we had a meeting with apartment managers on the west side to talk about this. And a lot of them were very amenable to doing what they need to do. But that's when kind of the conversation already started with Tina, to have that be a requirement as far as any new apartments that are, that are wanting to come into our city. But that's one of the things that's lacking is the cameras. Because that's, if we just had the cameras, like at Brickyard, it would have solved the problem. But that's, but I think that with this particular, in particular, new apartments will have them, but then also existing apartments are now going to have, going to have them as well. And I know the ones that don't have.
Is there a way that we can incentivize that with the existing complexes that? Is there a way that we can incentivize that with the existing complexes that maybe don't have it in place right now?
Well, I think a lot of them are just going to do it, because they realize that it's becoming, like at Brickyard alone, like I feel like.
Yeah, they want to avoid the bad.
They want to avoid the bad, yeah, because when you go in, I've looked at it, it says, like, a lot of deaths.
Or other long.
Exactly. So they're willing to do it, and I think they're going to put in the electric gates, actually, already. So, but I think it's with the older complexes, it gets, it get that arm wrap around. That's where, you know, it gets to be an issue. But again, the wraparound complexes are ones that are getting more because of the fact that there are a lot of electric gates.
And to dovetail onto that also is that my crime prevention person has worked with all of the apartments. We have 37 so far online, and we've created our own email address to be able to deal directly with the apartment managers. They're being sent their crime data, and so they can't say, I didn't know this was going on. And so we've got a partner with our communities to be able to make this work. It can't just be us. It can't be, you know, we can't have a cop on every corner. And so they can't say that we're not making them aware of trends that are occurring in their particular area. And so we're making it a point, not to, you know, not to slap them in the face, but to say, look, you got a problem, and here's some ways that you can deal with it. Help us, help you deal with it.
Do, I'm sorry, to go back to that, with the apartment, the email, do y'all meet with the apartment managers, like on a quarterly basis, or do you just send them an email?
Well, we originally, so the first set of meetings, we met with every last one of them. So Steve Robb, we met with every last one of them, and we're trying to get back around quarterly to do that. And then if they have any questions in regards to the data that is being sent, that is when they'll have to talk about it.
Well, Chief, how about let us know if we can help, as a city council, you know, in that district, you know, if we can help with that, even if it's just one of us going to give them their reports and, you know, and bringing you back any feedback, just so that you don't, with you being short-staffed anyway, you know, if we can help unload that burden from you, I know I'd be happy to do it, I'm sure the rest of us would be happy to do it.
Yeah, and I agree, and the reason I was asking that, yeah, the reason I was asking that is because, one of the things I was talking to Jeff Brady yesterday, is we're looking at starting neighborhood associations in my district, because one of the things that we figured, it's a great way to get neighborhood captains to disseminate information. One of the things with Richardson is that we had quarterly meetings with all of the HOA presidents, and it was a way, and apartment managers, and it was a way for us to have an outlet, one place, instead of having to meet with them every, each individual, have one place every quarter. We had a breakfast, and we would have city staff disseminate information to them on things they could share with their residents.
Right.
So that was a platform for us to be able to share, where you didn't have to, again, meet with every single person individually. So that's why I asked if y'all met with them individually, or jotted them an email, because one of the things in talking to Jeff, it may be a good idea to see if we can maybe pilot that, to have a platform, have our HOA presidents and neighborhood association presidents come to a meeting once a quarter, we can disseminate information about, hey, codes changed, these are the things.
Right.
Hey, you know, we see crime in this area, this is what you can do. Hey, sign up, if you have a camera, sign up. These are the things we want to share. So that way they can then share that with their, at their HOA meetings, or send out information on the newsletter for the apartments, and it's an outlet for us. We're being a little more proactive, not that we're not, but that way we don't have to have individual meetings with everybody. And it worked, I mean, we would have 60 people show up to these breakfasts, and it worked very, very well. And we did the same thing with National Light Out. During the last meeting for National Light Out, we sent them, hey, who's doing it? We'd love for you to do it. Let's try to see if we can, if we can have y'all come out. But, but just throwing that out there, I know that Jeff and I talked about it, to see if we can start doing that. So we'd love to explore that with your team, to see if that may be a best, a better, a better use. So that way we can even come to those meetings and see what's going on as well.
And you hit the nail on the head with the food. We increased our budget a little. It wasn't enough, it wasn't enough to make the.
Because if you meet them, they will come.
That's right. It wasn't enough to make the board, but it's for that very reason, is that, is because that's what we found out. It's just like, look, if you want people to show up, there's going to have to be something. And so that's what Steve has been doing, and he asked for additional money, and it is in the budget. It's not, not a huge amount, but.
Yeah, okay. Well, you can talk.
We're all very food motivated.
If you meet them, they'll come, man. They will.
Any other questions on this slide? All right, so here's the violent crime side of it, and just as you're trying to digest this, yes, you can see, so family violence is a subset of this other number over here, so it's not all other violent crime is up that far, and domestic violence. The family violence numbers are a subset of the violent crimes, so those are included over there as well. So the main driver under violent crime on the left side is that family violence is family violence-driven. So, and I have to make that very clear, because there's a difference between what goes on behind closed doors and what's going on if you happen to be walking down the street, or doing shopping, or going to the grocery store. Yes, we see some increases in those as well with population, but it's nothing compared to what is going on with domestic violence. These calls are dangerous for our officers. They are very time-consuming, because somebody's going to go to jail, and there's a lot of paperwork associated with it, even beyond the report, the arrest report. But once we get them to the detention facility, by law, we're required to ask if they want an emergency protective order. And if they do, if the victim wants an emergency protective order, we have to do that paperwork through the officer's testimony, and they have to fill out certain forms, so that when the judge comes in to see the person who has been placed in jail, that he can admonish them and advise them that there's now a protective order in place, that they can't go within 500 feet of that location, so on and so forth. So there's a lot of backend work that occurs. Once the initial situation gets calmed down, we're able to figure out what happened, and then an arrest is made. And so again, not just a number, but how long does it take to deal with that number? And again, the domestic violence, some of this is being driven by COVID, and it's very hard for us at this point to look and say, okay, well, this is COVID, and this is just sheer population growth. I wish I had that magic, magic, but I don't. So I can't really tell, but I know that both of them are having an impact. I can't, I'm comfortable saying that. So any questions on those? So these are the primary drivers. This is why they asked for the two additional officers and the funding for, to do two over-hires. To give you an update, since there was previous conversation, currently, we have four in the police academy. We have two that are lateral transfers that have started. We've got another one that will start at the end of this month that is a lateral. Locations, we've got Baltimore, Maryland, Burlington, Vermont, Panama City, Florida, Brookhaven, Dallas College, that one was a close one. So he's, we stole him away from Brookhaven next door. And so, so the incentives do work. People want to advance their situations. The bad side is, is that it is a, it's a worker's market right now, and that is true for police as well. So if you've ever aspired to want to go to an organization that is bigger, they'll sweep, they'll scoop you up, especially coming from Farmers Branch, because I'll brag, we've got great people. So that's kind of hurting us right now, also the opportunities for people to move up, when there's not a position currently in our organization, going to another city to become a chief, a deputy chief. People are hiring for those positions. Again, it's a, it's a worker's market. If you aspire to do those things, the openings are out there. And so I have a feeling that over probably the next, probably three to five years, we're just, this is going to be cyclical. This is going to be an issue that we're just going to have, we're just going to have to work through, do the best we can. HR's been great for us, and working on incentives. Five grand for a hiring bonus, if you're a rookie, once you graduate the academy, and then whenever you get out of the field training program, you get five grand. $2,500 for somebody who, any employee who.
Referes.
Refer somebody, and then we were able to hire that person. So there is some creativity going on out there. The other thing is, is it's not all just about money, it's about culture. And Brian mentioned that earlier. Having an organization that's willing to put up its staff whenever you have an ice storm in a hotel and pay for it, not every organization will do that. Ours does. Being flexible with hours and public safety is something that used to, it was faux pas, you don't do that. These are your hours, we're not going to move you. Too bad, one of these days, whenever you've been here for at least 15 years, you'll get to move around. Sorry. We don't do that either. Now we allow people to be a little bit more flexible, whilst we still have to, we still have to have a team out there. But we're utilizing some flexibility in our work schedules when we can, to be able to get people to spend a little bit more time with their family. We have special circumstances that come up. Somebody might have a sick family member. We're allowing them to move around within the organization on the patrol shifts, to be able to accommodate that, when in the past, it was always, no, this is your seniority level. You can't move, I'm sorry, you're going to have to make other arrangements. So we're trying to do some things that the private sector is already doing, within the limits of being able to still serve our community and field the team. But I think our, I think our ability to have a great culture is also as important as the pay. I think what has been proposed is reasonable. And, you know, is it the end-all, the be-all? No, we're going to have to continue to watch it. If the market's going to continue to be demanding, we may have to do something different, a little further down the road, personnel-wise. This is a great start. Since we had the staffing study done, this will be, in all reality, six that we've added, you know, with the two over-hires. Is it the exact number that they proposed? No, but we are steadily getting there. And so we'll continue to monitor our calls for service, the workload on our officers, the types of calls, how long they take, and I have no qualms in coming back and saying, hey, this is still not enough. So if we need, if we need more, and I think that's probably going to come in the form on the investigation side, because we can't say we need more patrol people, they're having to answer more calls for service, generate more reports that are open-ended and not solved, and not come back and say, okay, now I need more detectives to try to solve these crimes that we're taking reports on. So with that, questions?
Thank you, sir. And I know that, you know, I think most of our residents know that the biggest chunk of our revenue, of our cost and our budget is safety, and for good reason. And so I just want to thank you and Chief Vargas for all you do. Y'all do a lot with the little, but y'all have been able to provide some innovative approaches to the work that you do. And I just appreciate you all always just being open to new ideas and new programs, and all the things that we, that we discuss with you. So just thank you all so much for all that you do. And when I asked that question before, was because I just want to make sure that we are prepared for the future. So we'll look forward to seeing that in the next couple of years, with just making sure that we have the personnel needed to meet the needs of our growing community, and using the data to be able to make the right decisions strategically. So thank you so much. Terry, you have a question?
As I was listening, Chief, I just had a thought that was recurring through my head. And I guess this could apply to fire also. Leading by example, and, you know, we're trying to do a lot of things. You just mentioned some of the flexible, the flexibility that you're trying to entertain as you're trying to run a very disciplined organization. But is the workload for sergeants, lieutenants, and I'll even go deputy chiefs, such that they can't go out a day a week and get a sense of what's going on on the street? That they couldn't show those patrol officers, hey, we're out here doing it too? I know it's not their job function in the current positions that they're in, but I would, I pose that question, and I guess a similar question would be, when was the last time you were on the truck? You know, it shows the troops, if you will, hey, we're here to help you. We're a part of this also, you know, we're staying current. And so I just, I had that going through my head, and I hope nobody takes offense to that.
No. It's a great question, because I can tell you that absolutely yesterday, the first, well, was it yesterday or no, the day before? No, it was yesterday. First day of school. I had, my internal affairs lieutenant was standing at the intersection of Dennis and, was that Havenhurst?
Yeah.
Directing traffic. My lieutenant over CID was standing out directing traffic. So the answer is yes, it's an all-hands-on-deck type of circumstance, because first day of school is a disaster. There's just no other way to put it. It's not, it's not because anybody's doing anything wrong. It's just you've got so many new parents.
Yeah.
For the first time, they're bringing their kid to school, they don't know the traffic patterns, they're not used to it. And so it's like somebody kicked an anthill. And so we have a, we have a policy.
Really? Tell us exactly.
So that is, that is one of the circumstances where absolutely they're able to get out there. Right now, is I have a directive in place, so the way our organization is built is the lieutenant is really, a lieutenant and a sergeant aren't considered technically field personnel. They can't fill a beat. But right now, because of our staffing levels, a sergeant can fill a beat, so I can get people their days off at the officer level. Corporal has always been able to fill a beat. And, but they're having to do so a lot more frequently now. That puts the lieutenant in a position where they're going to have to be a little bit more adept at what's going on. You know, not that they're not, but that's the sergeant's job, but the sergeant may be off. And so the interesting thing, and this is getting a little bit off, but the interesting thing on the staffing, on the, on the study for salaries, is that corporal is spot-on, because that corporal can fill a beat. Because it was, it was 6%. It was the first supervisor under off. So officer was seven, corporal was six. That's very appropriate for their job description, because one day they'll be, you know, the first-line supervisor on the street. They go out and help the officers if there's, if there's an issue or they have a question. The next day, they may be an officer, even though they still hold their rank. They're still filling a beat and answering calls for service. The next day, the sergeant's out on vacation and the lieutenant's sick, they're a watch commander. So they fill all three roles. It's probably that you find out real quick if you're going to be able to be a good supervisor in our police department, if you can master being a corporal. After that, it's just biding your time until you can get the next spot.
With that example, we tried it our first two years, myself and Chief Parker, and we got feedback, direct feedback from operations. So we went out there with the troops during a fire or EMS call, and we were helping out. After that, immediately, we got feedback from the firefighters.
Stop it.
Don't do that. We're going to be helping out. Here you go.
Stand back there.
Yes, yes. They told us, you're our chief. Don't do that. Just sit back and relax it, and watch as it works. And they very made it clear for us to do that. So we tried, and we heard it. Yes, sir, and we stepped back and we were there. However, special service desk, it's like the last time we had a high-rise fire. That was the first time that active ten chief had to manage a high-rise fire. So something major, yes, that expectation from the command staff is for us to be there. So when that happened, myself and, at the time, Deputy Chief Alexander, we were right next to the commander, which was Kyle Richardson, for his first time doing a high-rise fire, more complicated than a single-house fire. But we gave him the confidence, okay, Kyle, step by step, we're here to back you up. What's the first thing you're going to do? And we slow that role and help him assist him. So anything major in the city, we assist the commander. But at the troop level, we're told not to.
Well, you know, I guess, and maybe my comments go more in line with culture than anything else, because, you know, there's only so much money you can put to somebody. There's only so many days off you can give somebody, whatever, but it's going to culture. And if I know, you know, my chief's going to, he's out there writing tickets. Or our chief came out and he was manning a hose, or whatever. Giving our frontline troops, and I use that word to describe them all, just that sense of pride that, oh, they're just in an office someplace, you know, we're the ones doing all the work. Well, no, we're all doing the work. And that's, I liken it, when I was in corporate America as a manager, I would still go out and make sales calls, when I had time to do that. And so I wasn't just sitting back in the office, barking out orders to everybody, but I was out there doing it too. And so I didn't know if that would be something that can work.
You know, I went out on the ride-along, and it was an unusually busy night. And corporals showed up on four different occasions, and lieutenants showed up on two occasions on my one sample of a night. So I didn't sense from that that they were sitting back at the station with their feet up. They were paying attention, and they were working on getting units assembled to different locations and then showing up when something was hot. I don't know, we're going to ask Mike Meschler if he's going to go out and mow.
Yeah, I think he should.
That's the only way. You're like, how did this happen? Not this time, you're like.
I can see that I've started an insurrection here. So I'm going to retract my comment and stay quiet. So I'm going to retract my comment and stay quietly down here at the end.
Oh, you put your foot, so I made a marijuana arrest last month. I made a traffic stop off at Webb Chapel in Delaware. I sure did. And so, yes, if you flaunt it in my face, I still wear a uniform and I will take care of business, so.
A quick question on a different note. What kind of feedback have you gotten in your recruiting? And even from your officers now? I know that, you know, our, our culture right now is, is to reduce, especially following COVID. Everyone's idea of eliminating or reducing their commute has become a much more important issue. And so I think we're in a really unique position right now in our city. We're, we're really excited about our growth and our property values are, have so increased. And it's given me and Sherelle lots of numbers that her and I can play with, and I love it. But I wonder, like, how that, how that impacts, and I know Chris Alden and I have talked about it, how it impacts our service men and women, whether it be our police, our fire, our teachers, you know, who, who want to stay in our community and who can't afford to stay in our community. And so are we losing, you know, do, do you have any, have you heard any of those kind of grumblings? Like that we're not competitive because we don't have affordable housing for, you know, for our front, our frontline staff? You know, our, our, especially our, our young recruits, you know, who are committed to that, that bottom line, bottom of the, of the pay scale?
Sure, great, great question. So overarching answer is cops don't like to live where, work where they live and work in the same community. And there's a reason for that. It's because you have to do your job. You write citations to your neighbors. You end up having to arrest your neighbor for domestic violence. Because I, I, before I came here, I was in a little small community where I did live in, in that community. And your days off were nothing but knocks at your door about somebody's dog barking, hey, did you see this? Did you hear about that? What happened over there? We heard sirens. So a lot of times, officers do not care to live in the community they police in. It's not true for everybody, but the majority of them, I think if you could just go up and do a survey quick, they would say, no, I don't wanna live here. Even if it was affordable. However, a lot of our younger officers now, as, as we're seeing a change in the dynamic of not just policing, but kind of across the spectrum of young people in homeownership, that's not necessarily their American dream anymore. And so we're starting to see that more and more with our newer, younger officers. And they're taking up the apartment complexes on their security jobs, where they'll get a percentage off of their rent or maybe a free apartment to be able to go do light list checks. We have rules that regulate that, because we're not cops for hire. But there, there are certain things that they can do and will allow them to do, but they can't just, they can't wander around in their uniform and be security for that. We don't allow that. It causes too many issues. But they can do other things. And the apartment communities are pretty well in tune with what those rules are.
Okay, perfect. I like to hear that. That's, that's why I was hoping, if there was anything creatively we could do as a, as a council to help incentivize our multifamily, you know, complexes to, to help out our, our police and fire room and even our teacher community and stuff.
Yeah, especially these higher, you know, with the newer complexes coming online, I'm seeing the rent, the rates. And it's like, that's more than I pay for my house. And so, so those incentives, and I know there's been some conversations, there's been conversations, it's just like, hey, you may have to sweeten the pot a little bit before. And we don't negotiate that, but other folks can have, make those comments and say, hey, it's just like, you know, you're not gonna get anybody at, at this. You're gonna have to do something a little better than that, so.
Yeah, but I think a lot, and a lot of the new ones actually, they prefer having a police officer than a security person. And so they, they are, I think they're doing a lot better. But you're right, we need to incentivize more, because they just keep going up and up.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous. All right, any other questions? Councilmember Merritt?
No questions. Thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I think what we'll do is we'll take a five-minute break. So we'll adjourn back at 2:40 for our final two presentations. Okay. The time is 2:46. We're gonna go ahead and resume with the ARC proposals presentation. Charles?
Great, thank you. All right, we've talked, and you may have seen in the paper, the, the American Rescue Plan funding proposals. It does appear at this point that the governor, it's not done it yet, but it does appear that he's indicated he's going to request the funding, which is a, a big thing. But this funding is federal funding that flows through for non-entitlement cities, which are cities 50,000 and under, which that would be us. They have to come through the state. And they're kind of handled like, kinda like FEMA. It's through the state agency that handles FEMA funding, it's the same, same organization. But that's, at this point, where it appears the money's gonna come through in two tranches. And the, we are, the, the amount that's been allocated to Farmers Branch, and it's based on the latest census information, is, is a total of almost 12 million bucks. 11,932,075.73 cents. And so that's a nice amount of money. There are some criteria as to how it can be used, but it's fairly loose. It's not as, it's not as complicated as the CARES funding, which we got a year ago. There's, but there are some, there's some things that have to be done to match the funding requirements. But at this point, what we've recommended is a number of projects. And we've listened to council at, at past strategic planning sessions, as well as just over the past year. And so what we're recommending at this point, and this is over two fiscal years, the use of the money in, in the following areas. We've talked about justice center renovations. And so in the two phases here would be phase one and phase two in two different fiscal years. But justice renovations, $2.5 million. Recreation center renovation, phase two. You've seen phase one, it's beautiful. Phase two, the upstairs area is obviously, there's not really anything that's been changed. So this phase would essentially kind of match, so they both look similar. And the quality of that first phase would be continued upstairs. $800,000 for that. A signature park, there'd be a phase one and a phase two. The total together is 4,060,000. I can't, I had to round a little bit, but, but, and Mr. Mashburn will be giving a presentation after, after this, a little bit more about that signature park. But I know we've talked extensively in the past about the signature park, about that being a big priority of the city. Mercer Park, I keep on using that as the title. I know it's not called Mercer Park, but that is the park over in the, in the Mercer Crossing development, where the developers agreed to give a section of property to the city and do in-kind donations of essentially a million dollars of work towards that park. We would supplement that with a million dollars, recommend a million dollars of ARC funding, and then potentially $650,000 from Pago, depending on, we're still looking at the scope of what that project's going to look like. And so we're in the very initial stages of that. But potentially $2.6 million in total to put a new park on the west side. Metrocrest Services Center Building, that I'm going to come back to here in a minute, but the total there is $560,000. Two phases, 160,000 and 400, so it'd be 560. Again, right after this slide, I will talk more about that particular proposal. The Intech Computer-Aided Dispatch Upgrade, this is, that was, you saw a portion of it in the budget for the police department. There was, it was a much larger expense. So we're recommending that 500,000 of that be paid out of ARC money. It's a one-time expenditure, so we thought it would be appropriate to, to come out of the ARC money as, as opposed to hitting the general fund. And then the final project would be the Branch Connection renovation, again, at 2.5 million. We've kind of found, you kind of go, okay, well, gosh, I keep on hearing it's 2.5. We, quite frankly, between the library and the rec center, phase one, we've kind of determined that the amount of renovation necessary to, to get to a point where you can really see an improvement and go, wow, this, this, this building has really been refreshed, is gonna be around the 2.5 million dollar level. These are rough numbers, but the, but we didn't want the only city facility that had not received a major upgrade in quite some time to be the Branch Connection. What we're envisioning here just conceptually is doing more on the outside, potentially combining this renovation with, you know, you may remember the senior living facility that we've talked about partnering with, Henrys Miller. How could I forget? The, in the parking lot, and you might have thought, gosh, you know, or didn't, you may not even know we were having that. But the conversation's been going along with Henrys Miller for many, many years. There are some issues in terms of potential pollution in the, in the, underneath the parking lot from dry cleaners and businesses in the past. And so that needs to be mitigated. Potentially, we might need to have an MSD designation, which is actually, we're, we're going for that designation right now. So, but we're, we're accelerating that, that permit. Once that's done, then we can work with the developer. And the hope is to combine any renovation with the Branch Connection to have kind of more of a complex and, and better landscaped. The Branch Connection is kind of over a park, so it's very sterile from the front park. But, you know, it's right in, it's right next to a, a major park. And so just looking at making some major improvements to make it more of an inviting facility. So those are the proposals for the ARC projects. Let me go to the, to talk more extensively about Metrocrest, okay?
Charles, do we have flexibility if, if this is the proposal, and we set this at this point? But, you know, is there any restrictions on this? Can, can we change?
You can change anything you want.
Okay, add, you know, add a later date that allows us to be a little bit more flexible in case there is, you know, with the Delta variant and things like that, if there is a, if a render need shows up.
Yeah, these are all just staff proposals at this point. And so, yes, there, there can be, there can be changes as, as council wishes. Okay. In terms of Metrocrest Services, is this, yeah, okay. And I'm gonna pass out, if you could pass that around. This is a, a request from Metrocrest Services. And currently, Metrocrest Services leases their facility in Farmers Branch. They're wanting to build a facility in Carrollton. And they actually, I'm gonna give you a very brief overview here, because Tracy Eubanks is more than happy to come out and talk to council about it. But many of you may know that they are, they're wanting to have a facility, a new, more usable facility to serve residents of all the cities that they serve in Carrollton. And so the, what their proposal is, is to, and you can see the little heart is where they are now. That's where they would be. And they're, the purpose of this particular graphic is to show the little dark dots are kind of the folks that they serve. And so the, the point here is to, is to say this would move them closer to the folks they serve. The proposal, they've already purchased the property in Carrollton. Their proposal is for a 48,000 square foot facility. And this is what it would, you know, the conceptual drawings of what it would look like. They have a significant amount of money. It's roughly about a 12 to 14 million dollar facility. They have already commitments towards about $6 million, 6 to 7 million. Towards that facility, they are asking of the cities they serve, they have an ask of $2 million on a proportionate share. Based on the population they serve, our proportion would be $560,000. Carrollton would have the largest proportion.
As a one-time contribution.
One-time contribution towards this, yes. Obviously, there would not, that would eliminate their, their lease cost. And so there, at some point, their, their cost structure would conceivably go down. But this is, again, some more renderings of the project. They are, they're, they've indicated that they, for this type of a facility, that once you get 50% of commitments for funding, then all of a sudden, there are foundations, major foundations across the United States that, that say, hey, you know, you're, you're really serious. And so they are, they're hoping that with the, the commitments from the city, in addition to fundraising they've already have under their belts, that they could get the foundation's interest. And they've already got a number of foundations that have expressed considerable interest. So their hope is to have, within the next year or two, the ability to construct this and not have really any debt. But they have lined up, just to get the construction going, if they have the financing in place, they do have a commitment from a bank to do at least a short-term construction financing. And like I said, I, I can show you the pretty pictures, but Tracy Eubanks is gonna have to tell you the actual services. But I know they're really, they're hoping to not only expand their services, but do a better job of assisting the residents from all four cities. They've also, because of the, you know, with COVID, they've been really stretched to provide services to residents out of their existing facility. And they're using, their, most of the administrative staff have moved out of the office in Farmers Branch, and they're, they're officing from home or elsewhere, because there's just no room for their operation. So anyway, I know you, y'all probably have a lot of questions about this particular project, but I wanted to throw it out there. You know, this is, it seems like it would be something that we could, if council was interested, we could make the case that ARC monies could be used. But I just wanted to pass it along, because all four cities are looking at it really seriously.
Yeah, and I just wanna add that. So I serve on the board of Metrocrest Services. And you're right, one of the things that has happened is, is we're, as we're looking at foundations to be able to provide the funding, we are eligible, and I'm using we as a context of Metrocrest, eligible for, for various of those funds and strong contenders. But one of the things is that a lot of them require at least 50 or 60% of funding that's already allocated in order for them to be able to do any type of match funding. And so that's when they decided to, you know, ever plus funding from the cities. I, I will say, you know, and most of y'all know this, but most cities have community development departments that assist with a lot of the things that Metrocrest Services does. We do not have that. A lot of that has to do with, with just, you know, just economies of scale and whatnot. And so they are basically our community development department. And so much like other cities, they actually give, just like Carrollton, just like other cities do, they allocate funding for them to be able to offer things like utility assistance and all these types of things. And so, and I will echo, and, and just being in that building, they're, they're constrained. They're, they're able to help more, but they're not able to just because of the, the constraints that they currently have. And by being able to have their own facility where they don't have to keep paying a lease, they're able to then expand services, to be able to hire FTEs, to be able to serve more folks. The needs have just been exacerbated as it relates to, as it relates to COVID. And all, and things have not slowed down for them. And so I am a huge advocate for them, as y'all know. And so I definitely would support the recommendation to partner with our sister cities in Metrocrest to be able to offer this, because they do offer thousands of our residents opportunities to be able to help them in their quality of life needs. So anyways, just wanted to mention that as, and as a liaison on behalf of Farmers Branch and the work that they're doing. So Terry, I know you had something.
So this is, I, I would only entertain this as a one-time event based on this special funding. I would also want a commitment that other cities are stepping up. We were told that other cities wanted to step up on a previous give, and nobody did. And we were the only ones who gave city funds for, to a charity. City's not a charity. The city is a business. And while we do support Metrocrest, because they, hopefully, the funds that we're giving to them do come back to serve our residents in need, and they can probably manage that better than we can, I just don't wanna get in a situation where it's the constant ask. You know, we have a limited budget, limited amount of money in our budget for donation to Metrocrest. And to Metrocrest, and so, you know, Tracy's really good about coming back, oh, we just need a little bit more, oh, we just need a little bit more. I love Tracy, and I believe in the mission of the organization, but when we're talking about taxpayer dollars, I think we need to really be very careful about what we do because if you ask citizens, they might wanna see other things done with our tax dollars. This is a very specific instance with this particular type of funding, and so, I would go along with just this.
Yeah, and, and it is a one-time, one-time fund, and, and to me, you know, even with the other, the other allocations we've done at Metrocrest, I see it more as a contract for service. Like I said, if we wanna take on the, adding a community development department, it would cost way more money with the FTEs, with all of that, to be able to run our own department, and all the, and all of our cities have some type of iteration of that. And so, but other cities have realized that, you know, they're proponents of let the experts do the work, and they are the experts, which is why they too, just like, just like Addison Capell and Carrollton, give money to Metrocrest as a contract for service to be able to allocate a lot of those different programs that makes it easier for them to be able to do what the cities do best as well. So, so anyways, but, but yes, Terry, it is a one-time thing, and so, I appreciate your support.
And I don't know that there's any strings attached on the, the money that we give them, that comes out of the budget, whatever it was, 285 or something like that. There's no contract for services there.
There has to be, by law.
Okay, I guess I haven't seen.
Yeah, every organization we fund, we are required by law to have a contract, because it has to be for services. You can't just give a lot of money to somebody.
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, they, they have deliverables that they're required to provide.
They come back every year.
And that's why they give them.
Well, I know they make the presentation, and we had contract for service with the chamber.
Yeah.
But I don't, I just don't recall seeing one for Metrocrest, so.
I think for, for any, any entity that we give money to, we have a contract for service.
Yep, we do, every single one.
The contracts actually got much stricter this last time when we went to the multi-year arrangement. It's gotten very firm qualifiers is the performance we'd like to see and the kind of data we're looking for, and so, all the organizations are in alignment currently.
Yeah, we made a bigger accountability, added some more accountability, accountability measures to the latest contract, so.
Well, I think this is great because this is, this is not a donation out of our general fund, this is a donation out of a fund that we wouldn't have had, this isn't taxpayer property tax revenues that we're pulling this, this money out of. And so, and so, you know, we're getting this money dur, after following a time of, of great hardship on our country as a way to help our local city municipalities, which, as someone who works in the private sector, I don't look at the city as a business. I think that those are two really, a local municipality is being a very different thing than a for-profit business. And so, I think our job is to serve our constituents and our, and our residents, and Metrocrest is definitely one of those charities and one of those programs that, I mean, we just saw on the little graphic, they help a ton of our residents. So, I mean, I think that that's just a fair, equitable give and take, if, you know, they help our citizens and we're gonna help them, so.
And, and I know that it seems like recently that they, that Tracy's come more frequently in COVID, and you might think, okay, my gosh, you know, they're always, they're always wanting money. Well, part of it is, is COVID-related, and then part of it is the economy has had a downturn, that, you know, one of the focuses of Metrocrest has been to keep people in their homes, and so, one of the highest cost drivers is, is the rental assistance, and going from just one month rental assistance to multiple months because they realize that, that, yes, yes, it isn't cheap to keep someone in their home, but it comes, becomes significantly more expensive once somebody's been evicted, and then you have a family that's homeless, and that, you know, and then does that going to become a crime-type issue, and it just became, it gets worse and worse and more expensive that way, and so, I think the focus, at least previously, council has believed that the focus should be try and, and attack the problem as early as possible, and I think that the philosophy of trying to keep someone in their home as best you can, and educate them about how to find work and how to, how to manage their own finances. Those are things that, it, it's increasing our cost to Metrocrest, but in terms of the more global look at the cost, I think it's probably money well spent, but that's, that's the philosophy behind that.
I'd also just like to say, Councilmember Lynn, with all respect, I mean, the city is not a business. Yes, you could look at us on a council and mayor as, as a board of directors, and we have, you know, fiduciary responsibilities, we set policies, guidelines, you know, strategic objectives, but we aren't a for-profit business, and, and I, and for spending our dollars wisely, but for a multitude of reasons, which have been discussed in previous councils, I'm supportive of this, and as has been noted, I mean, this is a, a one-time special funding, this American Rescue Plan that's coming in two equal tranches, and I don't think that we're being in any way fiscally irresponsible to invest this money with Metrocrest, and as, I think probably all of us at one time, you know, we got out of school, college, whatever, we rented an apartment, and maybe we rented a house, and then we bought a house, and I kinda look at this also in the broader picture and the longer range, that this is gonna be mission-changing in a way for Metrocrest to own their own building and their own facility and not be paying leases, and, you know, as we all know, I mean, commercial leases usually have escalator clauses, et cetera. I don't know what theirs is, but I think this is a, a very worthwhile project, and I, I totally support funding it, and as Charles has mentioned, and, you know, I know in discussions with Chief Hale and others, I mean, when people are in dire need and they've lost their jobs and are threatened with being evicted from a house or apartment or losing, being evicted from a home they own because they can't make mortgage payments, that's an extraordinary event and a huge trauma in their lives, and, I mean, just, you know, Tom, I've been following council and been on it, I mean, I've, I've heard so many stories, and I know that Metrocrest is literally making, you know, life-changing support for many, many families, you know, in our broader community of the other sister cities as well.
Did you misunderstand what I said? Did, did, I didn't, I never said I was against giving the money.
No, I know, but I, you, you, you said the city is a business.
It is a business.
Well, I take issue with that.
140 million in business.
We are not a, a for-profit business.
No, no, but we're not in the business to lose money either.
I agree, I agree, but, so, were we losing money if we make this contribution?
No, that wasn't the point.
Okay, well, I just, I didn't, I think that's a, a mischaracterization to say the city is a business. I think we can be guided by business principles, fiscal conservancy, being good fiduciary stewards of our resources, human personnel, money in the bank, tax revenue, et cetera, but we are not a business. That's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Merritt, do you have anything else to add on this piece?
Only, only a clarification if I may, Charles. I know that we have a separate line item, and at least have in the past for a contribution, if you will, to Metrocrest. I was, I tried to skim through, through the budget, and I couldn't find that. Could you guys direct me to where I might find that projection for this budget cycle?
Okay, it's under, you're talking.
Yeah, it's under the general funds.
It's under general contracts? General contracts.
Under general contracts.
Yeah, that's, that's where all of the, the, all of the social service organizations that we fund and the two chambers are located.
It's three dash four, under the general fund tab. But it just gives a bulk, it just gives a bulk, so.
Yeah.
But I asked Cheryl the same question. She can give us the details if we need them.
Yes, that's, that's all I was looking for, that, that amount was dedicated to Metrocrest, and, and that's fine, you directed me, I see it here on three dot four, that's fine, but that's a separate issue, and so, we have two, two elements going on. One is this contribution for the new building, and I also think that the Metrocrest is having a new building, you know, elongated 20-year, 40-year lifecycle of a building, you know, is going to make, as others have already stated, a measurable impact in the community to all those residents that take advantage of those services and require those services. So, I think that's a, a good measure of community participation with these funds that will be available to us. And it is a one-time expenditure, but it does appear that it's split over the two cycles of the distribution of the ARP funds. 160 in the first iteration and 400,000 in the second, but it's a one-time event, so, anyway, I have to be careful in how we count all of that. So, but I'm supportive, and so, those are my comments. Thank you, Chris.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Merritt.
Okay, and then Mr. Mashburn has, he's gonna be talking specifically about the parks portions of the, the ARP proposals.
Mike Mashburn, Director of Parks Recreation. If you were around any length of time, certainly a lot of you were on the, the council a year ago. We adopted a Parks Master Plan roughly a year ago today. Started working on that about two years ago, and what we found out through that was we were woefully deficient in park space, just green space in general, particularly on the west side of town, we're lacking amenities. We had facilities that were in need of some updates, and we wanted a signature park, so, as you saw the totals.
Oh, Mike, sorry, we need to take a quick pause. We have, we're having some IT connection issues.
I would hate for everyone at home to miss this.
You didn't get off to a great start, so this'll give you a little more runway.
Just trying to throw me off, guys.
Councilmember Merritt, can you give us a thumbs up if you can see us in the presentation?
All right. So, anyways, we, we had a bunch of projects that needed to be done, a lot of money it was gonna take to get us there because a lot of things had just been deferred maintenance for many, many years. And so, we looked at how we would get that done, and, you know, suddenly I heard Angel singing when Charles sent out an email saying, we have money, does anybody have projects? I said, by golly.
$10 million.
Do I have projects for you? So, anyway, proposed projects we're gonna talk about, as Charles alluded to, Rec Center renovation, phase two, Signature Park, Mercer Park, and the branch connection renovation. So, Rec Center, phase two. I'd like to start off with a little bit of background history on that. I never ask for anything that I can't justify, hopefully. Phase one, so what we were, where we were at, COVID kinda hit us, so what I like to do is compare numbers to 2019, which was our all-time highs. So, we hit all-time highs in memberships, revenue, on down the line, and so, I compare what we're doing today to that date, because 2020 is an easy mark to, to follow. We were down, before we reopened the, the Recreation Center, April 26, I think, at that point, we were down about, you know, 30-some-odd percent in revenue and attendance. Since that time, we went ahead, and we've increased that as of July, we're at 40% revenue, about that same percentage in attendance, and then if we look at our projections from, to the end of the fiscal year, we'll actually almost match what we did in 2019. So, we caught way up, and then we think in September, we should almost double what revenue was. So, that gives you an idea, when we upgrade amenities, people, people come, they want those. So, phase two details, pretty simple. It's a refresh to upstairs, so again, like Charles said, taking that same theme from downstairs, upstairs, new equipment, and this will be techno gym equipment, all top-of-the-line, state-of-the-art equipment, just like we have downstairs, and then the gym downstairs will get a refresh, and then we'll take that beautiful blue that was from 1992, and we'll turn that into something a little bit more contemporary. Timeline on this, so, this is a little tricky because, as you know, we have supply chain issues throughout the U.S., right, and contractors are, are top. Good thing is, we have Kevin Menchel on our team, and he's very good at corralling all of the cats and getting projects done. So, he and I have talked about this, once we have materials in place and we're ready to go, it's probably a four-to-six-month construction time. So, safe bet is probably the end of next fiscal year if this project is approved. Cost estimate, this is roughly $1 million plus equipment, so you will see at the next council meeting, equipment purchase being brought forward. That's only gonna be purchased if you approve this project. So, next one is Signature Park. So, this is the fun one. Some of you have seen some iteration of this a few years ago. I think John had to step in when I had what seemed to be COVID at that particular time, it was the worst experience, I would say. But anyway, this Signature Park is a fun project, and the way this sort of started was, John, the mayor, and I sat in my office one day, and we said, you know, what could a park be if you can do anything you want? I said, well, you know, I don't know, I think John said, what about a night park? Maybe, okay, let's, let's talk about that a little bit, let's, let's explore that. So, we talked about this, we got with a company called CompAn, and they're the industry leaders in innovation. They've done work for 42 years in every country you could possibly think of. They've done the Gathering Place in Tulsa, Oklahoma, which is a huge $100 million park, I think. They've done stuff for Disney, they've done whatever, and so, we brought them in, we said, hey, we have this idea for a Signature Park, we want it to glow at night. They said, we've never heard of that before. We said, exactly. So, in a hot weather climate, you think Texas, this time of year, we've had temper summers, but usually, it's god-awful hot this time of year, right? 105 degrees, who wants to go out? And our parks are vacant, but in the evening, maybe it cools down, it's kinda pleasant. Or other times of year, it would be nice to take your kids there, and so, we said, what if this glows like Disneyland? It's what we used is, what, and, and when you develop something, we wanna, unlike you've ever seen anywhere, you've ever done anywhere, it's an inviting space, it's a place that little toddlers, all the way up to large kids and even adults say, holy smokes, I wanna go down that slide when nobody's looking. So, we put this together, went through several iterations, and we came back with some visuals that you see here in just a moment. So, where would this go? Orangue Good, that's on the corner of Tom Field Valley View. It's a perfect location because it's a major thoroughfare through the city. It connects that corridor that we're trying to start at the historical park, going to, through the Grove, through Mustang Station, this would be the connector all the way to the Branch Connection, Rec Center, library, right? So, it kinda completes that corridor right there. It's got ample space, parking is currently in, in place, and we have those ball fields there, which we use for a ton of tournaments. So, when we're trying to solicit these large-scale tournaments to come to our city, stay in our hotels, you think this might be a selling point for a brother and sister that are, that are at the games too? I think it might. The cost, this is a $4 million park, and you say, holy smokes, $4 million? Trust me, I've been all around Metroplex, I've seen parks built for $3 million that are not, in my opinion, great. This is gonna be great, and I'll show you why this pays off in a minute. Why do this? So, community cohesion, when you bring out people in the community, they start to know each other, and you build social equity. When you have social equity, you look out for each other, crime goes down, you have more sense and pride of where you're at. The health impact, as we know, anybody that's got kids, you're on the devices all the time, you can't get them outside. I brought my kids to the focus group, they're stoked about this part, they would love to come. Some of your children were there as well, I think they liked it. So, it's gonna get people out of the house and enjoying parks again. COVID, I think, reintroduced us to nature. I think many people didn't realize what outside looked like until probably this last year, never seen it more used. A tourism draw, so again, this is a one-of-a-kind park, you've never seen anything like this, and John, you can attest, I mean, we had the president of CompAn actually fly out to our last focus group meeting to meet us because he said, you know what, we've done many projects all over the world, we've got designers, we've got architects, we've got whatever, we've never seen anything like this, and we've never been stretched like this by anybody before. So, they said, this is one of a kind, we're so stoked to get this done, and everybody's gonna know that Farmer's Branch started perhaps a new trend in how you do parks in warm-weather climates. And the marketing asset, as I alluded to before, this'll win awards, this'll be all over, will be a trendsetter, as far as that's concerned. But again, why, why does this make sense? Economic impact, the only thing that I can really kinda compare this to and extrapolate just a little bit is Clyde Warren Park. Somebody at some point, probably Cheryl can tell us, had a crazy idea back then to build Clyde Warren Park. Well, we've seen what that's done, and a study done a few years ago, first seven years of operation estimated $2.5 billion in economic impact over that period of time. We did just 2.5%, and I'm gonna challenge Councilman Williams Merritt to do the math, 2.5% would be $62.5 million over that period of time. We're spending $4 million, getting $62.5 million back over a seven-year period, maybe more, who knows? over a seven-year period, maybe more, who knows? That's a good business case, right? So that makes sense. What would it look like? Here's an overview, daytime. And the colors don't pop like it normally would, but I will kind of show some of this here. So you have the zip wire right here, these dots light up as you race. So there's no fighting between brother and sister on who wins. That's fine. The orb that lights up that you've seen pictures of, that glows at night, it's a multi-level, five slides coming out. We have shade structure so you won't burn your britches. And we're gonna put LED lights in here so they light when you come out. Each, each level has an interesting feature, but this thing is massive. So when we said, "We want people to know we're here," they're gonna know we're here. Thirty-two feet high, built on top of a bin vacant as well. Seven-two feet in diameter there. So that's a massive structure that a lot of people play, high-play value, perfectly safe as well. These glowing seats for parents to chill out, relax amongst their kids. We have a really interesting swing area and top play over here. And then for the little guys, we have their own little area as well, and all sorts of features from here. Now, this is not part of it yet, this phase, but we thought, "Wouldn't it be cool if we had food trucks out there? And we complete the experience." So we have food trucks with glowing seats, and then perhaps a stage at some point. So you can bring bands, you can do storytime during the day, you can do whatever, and create a full experience. Maybe even a splash pack. We don't have a splash pack. We have a water element over here at the entrance, and we are calling it Hoya for now. It's not concrete, but that means- Councilmember Rotana, what does that mean, Spanish?
Jewry?
Jewel. Crown jewel of the city, right?
What was the word?
Hoya. Hoya. There you go. So, so right in the middle of the city, crown jewel of the city. I think it makes perfect sense. So that's kind of the, the space right there.
Mike, can, before you move on from that, can you, can you tell me where, where the roads are? Like, how is the orientation? Like, has it, yeah, it's orienting one?
Tom Field is on the bottom.
That's Tom Field over here?
Yes, Tom Field and Valley View.
And then Valley View is over here to this side? Okay. That's awesome.
And then the creek would be on, what's the top of it, right?
On there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Everybody come back around.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that the green underneath the ball is that soft play underneath the big globe?
Yeah, porn play.
Yeah.
So this, this could either be the probably synthetic or surface right here, but we do have form play over here and throughout here.
That's got the, that's got the-
Correct. It'll all have us, yeah.
That's fun.
Exactly, yeah. And then here's some visuals. So a night view of this, really cool, really striking. And we have some more if you wanna peruse some of these later. But again, a focal point for the city. And then just another few. Now, we have done, we are in the midst of doing some lighting studies just to make sure that this doesn't approach anybody. But with LED lights, it shouldn't impact anything whatsoever. The only ones that may be able to see something are those condos that are up on Valley View. But again, we'll, we'll do some studies, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna be an issue in that.
That bigger slide, I'm sorry, because, because this is the first time I've seen it, and I love it, and, but I know, because my one just finished-
Hot.
Yes, it's a-
Yeah. So shade structure should help this. Now, of course, it's not gonna cover the full thing depending where the sun goes, but it will be part of it. One thing I forgot to mention, though, I neglected to mention, there was a study as well done on property values in close proximity to high-value parks. It was estimated that if you do a decent park, the property increases five to fifteen percent. A spectacular park, forty percent. So I think the residents might not mind lighting if they walk by once in a while. Anyway, before I move on, any questions on this part?
I have a question. I'm excited about it. I was excited when you first presented it when we were at the fire station a couple years ago. But I, I have a question about the inclusivity. Is it, is this gonna be an all-access, all-inclusive park?
Yeah, so that's one thing that CompAn specializes in, that we love, is it's inclusive. So if we rewind, you know, two kids can go down there, but there are levels that they can go up and do. I don't know if you can get a good video-
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Some of the swing sets, but the swing sets, if you're mobility impaired, you can go on there as well.
No, that's really important because then we can tap into some funding specifically for all-inclusive parks, meaning that our, our neighbors with, with disabilities are able to use it, too. So that's really exciting.
Absolutely. Funny you mention that. We are working on a grant that would give us $750,000 matching money as well. Tough grant to give, but I think we got a good shot. And so this would help with some of those other elements I was talking about later, and that plays into it. So that was one of the points that we-
Is it the Speed Foundation?
No.
Because they gave us money for the Flagpole Hill Park, which is all-inclusive. That's how I met CompAn.
No, it was- I'll have to, I'll have to look.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a National Parks and Wildlife grant, I believe.
Okay, gotcha. Awesome, thank you.
Sure. So I'm just getting all, here we go. So Mercer Park is the next one I wanna talk about as we're on the park subject. So Councilmember Rotana, I know you've been passionate about this. I know you helped get this done, you and the mayor, so thank you. And to John, because we were deficient in park space up on the west side. And so you all got together and said, "Hey, what if we worked out a deal? Give us the three-point set by acres along the waterfront, see what water will do right there? What can we do with a park?" And so that's a great space. Got with John, I said, "Please let me work on this. I think we can, we can do something pretty special over there." So we came up with some ideas. I went over the project background. The current proposal, the, the problem with the site is it's not site-ready yet. Now, I know the developer is getting ready to site for us, but we still need electrical, we need irrigation, we need sod, we need landscaping, and we need some concrete pathways. Now, they're gonna pay for partial, but not the whole thing. And so you're probably looking at close to half a million roughly to get that stuff done, but there is some extra money. We talked about it, another five hundred thousand to do possible amenities with. So a few things we talked about, we wanna get resident input, but some of the, some of the things we, we spoke about were, I think this is probably more adult-centered just because of the people that live over there, the demographics. Not as many kids, there's already a small playground across the way. So what can we do for some of the adults or people that wanna enjoy the nature over here? Tennis, pickleball courts, I know those are popular. That can certainly be added. And there's some sport courts that are fantastic that I'll show you one at a minute that would be really cool. A small dog park. We took a look, there's a lot of really tiny local dog parks over there. If you got a big dog, it's not great, I gotta be honest. It's for your little tiny pups, it's not a place to get excited about. We could do something, you saw what we did over the Barney Wood Bar Park. It wouldn't be quite as big, but we can do something over here that would be pretty special, I think, as well. To make use of that water, a boat dock with kayak rentals, I think would be really neat. And here's how the kayak rentals could work. You can put a boat dock in and we've got some loose pricing on that, but they do have standalone kayak rentals that are solar-powered and that you can check out with a credit card and replace, and you don't have to man them. They're not that expensive, and you can make use of the water, too.
Does that tie in, does that waterway tie you to the Trinity at all? Or is it isolated?
No.
It's its own-
It's just its own.
Yeah.
Some mobility.
Yeah. There's some cool things that you can do with adult fitness, lining that water right there. There's some companies that come in that would do some real cool things to line that water, and then it's in bar. And if I showed you an overview of what that could look like, you could do fitness classes out there, yoga, or whatever you wanted, which would be a pretty neat use of that serene space, I think. Playground, there's already one across the way, so we probably won't worry about that. Splash pad is, is a possibility if that was a desire of residents. And certainly, we could put fountains in that, in that pond to make use of that at night. And pathway lighting, this goes back to what we were talking about here with the Signature Park. Being in Texas, it's not pleasant a lot of the time when you're outside. But in the evenings, it might be. So pathway lighting, I think, would be pretty neat to put in there to make use of that space and really invite people to come out and use our park in the evening. Again, a bit of an expense, but it's a possibility. So before I skip forward, any questions on this project?
No questions. This is something that we've been working on for, for quite a while. Still very excited about it. I did wanna just note that one of the biggest things that the residents have advised is that they, they love our process for, for parks. And so they're excited about the community input piece. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we wouldn't wanna playground there only because the biggest thing that I see is they want a bigger playground. They want something, and we're seeing also is that there are more pockets of townhomes that aren't a part of the HOA that are coming up, right there on Hutton, and a few others that are coming about. So, so we are having folks that are not part of the HOA that are moving into that area. So anyways, just wanted to throw that out there, but, but I know that we'll go through that process, and they're just really excited for that. So thank you so much for your work.
Cool. All right, next one, Branch Connection renovation. So this is, this is kind of a fun one, and this is something that's kind of been dear to our hearts back here, Rachel especially in the back. But we talked about this for a long time. We've had plans for all of our facilities, and this was in our master plan. And we weren't sure how far down the road we'd get before we'd get to this, but then the ARC money, money came up. And so we had some cool ideas. What you see back here is a green space. And, well, why do you put a green space there? As Charles alluded to, there's that side parking lot that's almost never used. It's a pretty large space, and it does above the road. But what you can do is surround it with a fence, put foliage to make it seem like a park, dampen the noise, and do a senior-only park that's enclosed. Now, the idea behind this is you can put turf. I need to move. Sorry, Councilman, I keep, we keep moving you. I gotta move you. Let's move you over here.
No worries.
Okay, okay. So you see a putting green along the side, which would be pretty neat. You've got beautiful topography. And then we could probably put a stage over here with an awning, maybe do little bands. One of the things that I'll get to in just a minute is seniors. I looked at some, some trends in senior living. Two of the biggest activities that they wanna do are whitewater rafting and skydiving. Who knew?
Oh, we can do either.
That's actually true, but, but we can't do that. But they also like live music, and they like food trucks, and they like doing things that everyone likes to do, right? So, so we started thinking, "Okay, how do we make this not feel like a tired, old facility?" Well, this is a start. We can do access to that plot of land that's just adjacent to it that we'll be seeing in living at some point. Maybe they have access to this at night if, if they wanted to for fifty-plus, and you get in if you live there. You get in if you're a member of Branch Connection. It's, it's a great use. You've got a pickleball overlay here. You can do volleyball, you can do basketball, it's multi-use. But I think that could be a really interesting use of that space and solve the senior park, which would be new.
There's something on the door side of the building, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's on, it's on the side that's never used. But we looked at it, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, this is a huge amount of, of space over here." So the building opened in 2000, hasn't been touched since. So it's twenty-one years, it's a long time ago without a renovation. We're at all-time highs with memberships, believe it or not, right now, even after COVID. The baby boomer population is just over seventy million right now, which is before the millennials came along, is the largest population. And we've grown almost double in a ten-year period in Farmers Branch. And so there's a desire, there's a growing need. We also try to forecast, so I think this is gonna be really cool for our, our, our people. But one of the things that I always think about and when I do something, I say, "Would I wanna use it?" And I look around the room, and I can guess we have a few people that are technically fifty-plus in the room. By a show of hands, who goes there to recreate on a regular basis? I know you're there. Okay, so, not a whole lot. Carrie, I know you wanna go, okay, but, employee, you don't wanna get noticed, right? But, so I look at it, and I go, "Okay, if we're not using it, maybe we're missing the mark. Can we do something different?" So I wish I had some, some pictures to show you, but what I'm looking at for the inside is I, I patterned it off of this place called Children's Learning Adventure. And I used to live next door to this place. And, and I call it Disneyland for children because they make every space interesting. And to get a sense of what I'm talking about is when you go to the Rec Center, the newly renovated childcare area is now interesting. It's got clouds hanging from the ceiling, it's got a sun, it's got whatever. And so it, a regular room can look inviting if you salt the lighting, if you make it interesting with just some light finishes. Now, I'm not saying we're hanging clouds from the ceiling in here, but when you walk in the door, it's gonna be interesting like when you go to the Rec Center, like when you frequent the dog park. I would say the dog park is interesting for a dog park. It looks nice, we, we have intentionality with that. This would be the same way. We ran it through a couple of board members just before the meeting. Their excitement is palpable. They said, "We never thought we'd see something like this." Uh, council certainly has to agree, right, but, um, but they are really excited about this. And so, um, I think some things I mentioned with the population growing, uh, with the building not being renovated, with us doing this renovation throughout other facilities, this just makes a lot of sense. Um, and also, we've, there's some research that's been shown that, um, people that are in concert with other individuals have a much greater cognitive ability, they don't suffer from depression, there's a lot of health benefits to that, so I think that could only help. If we can capture those people, maybe some of the room that don't go today, maybe come down the road when it's, it's nice. So I just described the vi- vision, proposed budget, as Charles mentioned, was roughly two and a half million. Now, we'd have to get hard numbers, but again, um, we can go down that road if this is something folks wanna see. And that's the wind-up and the pitch, do we have any questions?
I have, I have one thing, um, Mike, that, just because I'm at the rec center a lot. Um, and, and I feel like I, I have, um, you know, I have a, a pretty broad, uh, population of, of people that I talk to specifically at the, the rec center. Um, and, and I'm sure you'll see it on feedback on the survey. Um, I think we've got a whole in our population that we, um, that we're catering to through the rec center. Um, through our over-eight-year-old children and under sixteen. Um, and that's a, that's a large group, and that's a large group of, of very vocal people. Um, that would like to see space within our recreation center that's more dedicated to, to that age group. Um, that gives them something to do, because I know we've got a lot of parents who are avoiding the rec center right now, that, that would be more involved in, in the programs at the rec center if they had something to do with that particular group. Because that, that middle-aged group of kids, they're too old to be in the new play center, which is fantastic. And they're too young to be on the gym floors. Um, I've seen, like, several times I've seen parents taking their kids up onto the, um, track, just so that they have, you know, the kids are doing something with them. Um, so I would love to see, and, and that group in particular, um, is real susceptible to over-device play. Um, and so without having to go into some kind of organized sport or something like that, for a recreation center that serves the entire community, I'd like to see something upstairs that, that they could do, that, you know, that, that would attract that, that group. They don't need a whole lot of supervision, but at the same time, we can't let that group just free-for-all either. And I know that that's been a concern at the rec center before, but, um, but I know that that's a missing part now that the, the first phase has been, um, completed, so, no, I would like to do that.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point, and I've heard that at times through my career before. So here, here's the issue that I've encountered with that, is every time we've tried to program for that tween slash early teen demographic, they don't show up. Uh, research shows they don't like organized play, they wanna kinda come and go, and so that makes, that makes it challenging. Um, we can certainly look at that, and Rachel maybe will give me.
Well, and I totally, and I totally agree, and that, and that's, I, I think that's why we had so many of them at the rec center before, was because they had a room that they could come and go with. I know there was a challenge with that, with staff, because their staff felt like they were babysitting, because they, they were just running all over the place. Um, and so I know it's, it's Charles Rywood, um, that would be my, my challenge to you, is how can we engage that group without them feeling like they're being overly supervised, without it being a big, you know, task on our staff at the rec center? Um, but where you don't have parents who feel like, um, that there's been a lot of dedication to the very small. Um, and, and the adult, but it's a family, it's supposed to be a, a recreat- recreation service for the whole community, so. So I would challenge something.
Do you think as a former fitness instructor, maybe that would work after school, doing like a fitness class for that demographic?
For sure.
Yeah.
For sure, I really do.
Okay.
Um, but you, but that's the whole thing there, you, that's a hard one, because you wanna keep them confined, you don't, you don't want, even as a fitness instructor, you don't wanna have them in the general, in those general areas.
Sure.
So when we're looking at equipment and things like that, I would just like to see that we kinda keep that group in mind. Cause it, because that's the thing, if, if they had, where we could have, you know, a, a, one of the older gr- you know, one of the, uh, uh, fitness classes going on downstairs. If they felt like they also had a time slot that those kids could go at the same time. I know we used to coordinate a lot of our fitness classes around that, when they could have gymnastics. Um, but it was also nice because they had the teen room, which really became more of a pre-teen room.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Um, they like to be considered that they're teens, no, sixteen-year-old is gonna go hang out in the teen room. But a thirteen-year-old is gonna hang out in the teen room.
Yeah.
So, um, so maybe something like that.
Good, okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that, sure.
So I wanna piggyback off on that, and one of the things that I've seen other communities do in their senior center, um, is they, a lot of our, um, our centers, like, they, they like to congregate with, with younger, young adults. And so they started to create, um, like, one of them after Queen's Gambit came out, which was a Netflix chess thing. They actually started doing chess, where anybody can come play chess with our seniors, which I thought was really neat, so. Um, and it's just, just for discussion, I think it'd be really neat if we could offer some of those opportunities. I know when I was younger, um, I used to take folklorical classes in the senior center with our seniors. And it was open to any age group, and it was really cool, because I was dancing with a little fifty-year-old lady, and it was fun, and so, and I was like ten, and it's just, I just think it's really great, um, when we, um, you know, just kind of mix people together, and I'm, so anyway, something to think about for programming in our branch connection is where, um, you know, adding these really great, um, opportunities, um, and, and enhancements. Um, because I think that'd be really neat for us to, to do some, some of those things. So, so just wanted to piggyback up off that and looking at what, what folks can do that are in different age groups. Um, because I, and I love playing with them, so, you know, anyways, just a thought.
Right, thank you, we'll take a look at that too.
Yeah, thank you. Any other thoughts, Councilmember Barrett?
Yes, thank you, Crystal. Uh, Mike, thank you so much for the, uh, update. Couple of questions for you. Uh, of course, I love the park, you know, I was on the park board when this idea came up, and so very excited about the potential for the initial development and then the future expansion, I think that's really important. Uh, do you have a question on what is called Mercer Park at the moment? Just help me out with the graphic, uh, that is shown, I understood all of the parts and pieces, but I was a little confused by the graphic, and maybe Crystal has a better perspective. The townhomes shown there that are in the green space, um, are those proposed to be built? Or how does that, how does that park overlay, if I'm assuming the three-point-seven-five acres is the park overlay? How does that work with what's shown as, uh, building structures?
So I believe the graphic, so the graphic that you're looking at is an old graphic, and we just overlaid the green spaces to show where the park would be. So those townhomes that are in that green space won't be there anymore.
Thank you, okay, you've an- you've answered the question, that's fine. I just, I, I suspected as much, but thank you for the clarification, no other discussion on Mercer Park. And then if I may, uh, moving then to the Branch Connection renovation, uh, what are the plans as far as Farmer's Branch Park, the much bigger? I know there are ideas, uh, that are generated there. Is there the potential for connectivity of these two things? Or, or, is, what's, are we looking at a totality of all of these things blending together? Help me understand what your vision may be there.
So, yes, I, well, ideally, yeah, it could all be one, the, where this is gonna be situated is gonna be detached from Farmer's Branch Park. I don't know where I'm looking at wherever David's at. Anyway, somewhere, um, but, uh.
You don't have, don't worry about looking at me, I can see you, so that's.
Feel so informal.
Look toward Alabama.
Yeah, right, right. Um, no, so it would be detached from Farmer's Branch Park, but there are, um, there are ideas that we do have for Farmer's Branch Park in the future. Again, that's a huge space over there. Um, we do wanna take out the backstops in the middle of Farmer's Branch Park and put them around the outskirts to make that more of a usable space. Um, over there, uh, there's some enhancements we can make to the plain surface and some of the, some of the amenities out there. Right now, that's not, um, that's not on our, our forefront list of things to do, just because of all you've seen in addition to um, the John Burke Nature Preserve, so, uh, yeah, so this would actually be detached from that. And what we wanna do with this space is create a space for those fifty-plus only to enjoy, and so, uh, kinda get.
Totally understand, totally understand the target audience here, but I wanna make sure that, from a holistic perspective, we're thinking down the road, whether, let's call it phase three or four, it's a progression to improve that entire area. Uh, that comes under your, uh, responsibility.
Yeah, and that, that is something that we've talked about quite a bit in-house on what we can do out there. We have explored putting synthetic field turfs, uh, fields in there, um, which are crazy expensive, and then they do need replacement down the road. Uh, I don't know that the payoff is there right now, uh, to do something like that, but there are some things we can do to the turf to make it uh, more pleasing, um, and be more premier, kinda like Cox Field is. So we're, we're still exploring those, but that is on our radar.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Just, about how large would this space be?
Uh, I'd have to measure it out, uh, but if you look at that.
Just, just roughly?
Oh, gosh, Carrie, you have any guess on what that could be?
Yes, it is, it's about two-hundred feet wide, if, if, uh, the parking lot on the north side of the building. Um, at the entrance, off of Bowwood, right there. Um, we've kinda looked at some different boundaries, but what we're looking at right now is just right at that first turn, where people park up against the building. Just where that first section is, all the way back to the Bowwood, across there. It's roughly two-hundred, little or two-hundred feet by about a hundred and eighty, across it's a pretty good size.
Yes.
And like you said, fencing it off all the way around, vegetation around it, maybe a pavilion, the, this is the versa bottom court that we're looking at. Um, it's a putting green, different things, but we need even a walking track, you know, around it, so that's.
Good thing it's weathered concrete there.
Yeah, and it, and it's roughly, like you said, two-hundred feet, you look at a basketball court, it's about a hundred feet, right? So this is pretty much the space you'd be looking at, right there.
And, and keep in mind, the senior, uh, the, the, that, there's a good chance to have that senior living project in coordination. I mean, if we could have more of a campus-like setting between the two, I think it'd be really nice to break up that area.
Right.
And Henry S. Miller is known for doing nice projects, I think this could be a good opportunity to kinda, instead of having, you know, two things plopped down that are so totally different and designed differently, if we could, from a landscaping perspective, have them joined. It could be, I think there's some interesting opportunities there to, and that's, but this is the very initial stage, obviously.
Well, I think that could be really attractive to the developer, period, you know, the, to help, you know, if his, if his, uh, residents could, would, could and would utilize, and then that also increases our membership at Branch Connection, so I think that's a, you know, and I'm, and that group is so good about giving, giving good feedback, so I would just take, take that to them as far as what kind of amenities we want inside the, the fenced area. Um, and, and let them, you know, let them have lots of, that board is relatable, so it'd be.
Yeah.
Let them, you know, have a say in what's going on in there, so.
I think that'd be great.
And get them real excited about it, too.
And I'm assuming that we don't have any impacts with, uh, parking issues if we're gonna use a parking lot?
No, we, we shouldn't, um, it, one time a year when we do Veterans Day. Uh, but we're moving that offside next year anyway, to Farmer's Branch Park, so, um, should be good.
We move that to the, to the historical park?
Uh, Farmer's Branch Park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, everybody tried a new concert this year, it'll be Toby Keith Tribute Band, with other amenities and open to everyone, not to seniors.
Awesome. Is it gonna be, still gonna be during the date?
Yeah, during the day, yeah, kind of a family event. I believe it's a Saturday, right, Rach?
The evening.
Yeah.
The early evening.
On a Saturday?
Oh.
Yes!
There you go, just for you, yeah, we changed it just now.
Well, no, cause we, we have so many people that wanna be involved, but they couldn't, because it was like at ten o'clock on a Tuesday, so, uh, I think this would be really great.
And that's one of the things we talked about, is if you're celebrating our veterans, it should be everyone from eighteen years old all the way up to ninety-nine, right? So, yeah.
Yes.
All right, any other questions?
Carrie, you have a question?
Uh, not a question, but, uh, this is very exciting, and I'm looking forward to seeing more. But if we get this funding, I'd love to see you take maybe, whatever the amount is, it might be fifty thousand dollars, it could be as much as a hundred thousand dollars, and go through, uh, the rest of our parks where we have the old wooden picnic tables, and replace them all, because many of them are still splintered. And you can't run your, your hand across them, you'll get torn up.
Yeah.
And replace them with, uh, some new tables that are more user-friendly.
Sure.
Perfect.
Thank you, and Cheryl, you came in late, uh, Charles authorized forty million dollars, so we'll go ahead and.
I'm sure that didn't happen. I'm sure that didn't happen. Look, we'll consult the camera.
The missing, the missing ten minutes.
Gotta watch, man. Real, real.
All right, so.
I'll, I'll tell you.
That was our last presentation for the day. Um, I want to go ahead and see if Amy, if you have any, um, direction for later on this evening, where to meet, what to do? I think it says, um, at six PM, we walk to dinner, is there a time that you would like us to meet? And where?
Five forty-five, we head over to Christina's, so.
And do you wanna meet in the same dining room?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll meet in the same dining room as we met yesterday at five forty-five, so we can walk over.
Dining room.
No, the, the little lounge, the little dining, the little lounge area, yes, sorry, yes.
Will it be cheeses before I enter?
No, yes.
All right, Councilmember Barrett, we are done for the day, thank you so much for joining us, we will see you early tomorrow, we'll miss you.
All right, I'm gonna go get sand in my toes.
There you go. All right, so we will adjourn at three fifty-one PM, thank you all so much.